Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Housing Authority for the city of Salem from, I'm sorry, Housing Authority of the city of Salem for Monday, November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one to order. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Vice Chair Stapleton?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Leung?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Chair Hoi?
Here.
Commissioner Nordike is absent and sitting in for her this evening is Guest Counselor Evan Sores.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome Guest Counselor Sores. To join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Vice Chair Stapleton, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Not tonight.
Thank you, and I see that we have nobody signed up for public comments. Vice Chair Stapleton, a consent calendar.
I approve a move. I, that was funny. I would like to move approval of the minutes for the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar, just to clarify, all the items on it?
Yes, the consent calendar, oh, do you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. We have the October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one draft Salem Housing Authority minutes, and item three point three A, which is the revised section eight administrative plan, and that concludes our consent calendar.
Excellent, thank you. Any discussion? If the recorder will please call the roll.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Leung?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Nordike is absent. Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Stapleton?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Chair Hoi?
Aye. Motion passes. I see that we have no public hearings, no special orders of business, but we do have an information report, and I see Ms. Yoots here. Ms. Yoots, I would really love it if you would start by giving us an update on what's happening at Yaquena Hall. I know that that project has been, you've been working on it for a number of years, and we're getting, we're getting close to the time, the finish line of, of the starting line, I guess is the best way to put it. That's going to bring us fifty-two new units of permanent supportive housing that is going to help us end homelessness in Salem. And I'm hoping you'll give us an update on where that's at before you start your other remarks.
Good evening, I'm Nicole Yoots, I'm the Housing Administrator for Salem Housing Authority, and I'd be happy to talk about Yaquena Hall. Yaquena Hall and South Fair are actually a packaged, low-income housing tax credit project that, yes, has been in the works for nearly five years. So we're very excited to be nearing the finish line to getting this project closed. It does have a scheduled close date of December thirteenth. We are rapidly working behind the scenes in a fury of very important documents, getting loan documents ready, getting everything prepped to make that happen and get all the funding cycles in, in hopes that we can quickly get a notice to proceed and get that project underway and under construction. So the goal is to start having activity just right after the first of the year, have that place fully fenced off, and have Walsh Construction there to get it going at Yaquena Hall. But that is adding additional fifty-two one-bedroom apartments, and there is a twenty percent set aside for serious and persistent mental illness, and we will have a coordinated entry referral process for that building, as well as at the South Fair Apartments. We've had that project since nineteen ninety-nine. The Salem Housing Authority took that project on as a request to help bring up that neighborhood back in nineteen ninety-nine. We've kept it in great condition. It's, it's starting to age over since that period of time, and we're going to fully rehabilitate it and bring it back to its, it to a real wonderful, beautiful new self that's going to last for the next thirty years as well. That's also going to add an additional two one-bedroom fully accessible ADA apartments, so that we can add that to our stock as well. Those are much needed in this area. But besides that, we're adding project-based vouchers to that entire apartment complex, so everybody will receive subsidy assistance at this, at this point.
And can you remind us how many apartments there are existing today at South Fair?
There's forty apartments currently, and we're going to, so we originally had a contract with Mid Vallet Valley Community Action Agency for a head start on that property, and they outgrew the building, and we feel that our mission is to provide decent, safe, affordable housing and to convert that building into more apartments.
Excellent, and so that, and those, that's for families, for individuals, whoever, right?
Yes, I'm sorry, those are ones, twos, and three-bedroom apartments. So it's a multifamily complex, and we have many individuals that have been there very long-term, and we're glad to be able to provide them this decent, safe, and portable housing into the long-term future.
Great, and what will happen with those people who live there currently during their remodel?
Great question. So the individuals, we actually have a relocation plan that is based off of the Housing and Urban Development's Uniform Relocation Act. We take care of all of the residents' needs that are there. We've already been meeting with them and deciphering where kids go to school, where people go to work, what bus lines they may take, what banks they go to, and trying to find the best accommodations for us. I can tell you that one family who it was over income was able to, we were able to provide them relocation assistance, and they bought their first home. So we're very excited for them. They're a long-term, they were moving out and they were over income to be able to come back, so it was a great opportunity for them, and we were happy to help make that transition. Besides that, these are short-term turnarounds for the units, so they won't be out of their unit for more than probably thirty, forty-five days, and many of them are going into extended-stay hotels that we have a long-term standing relationship with in this town due to the amount of rehabilitations and emergency needs that we have, and they have kitchenettes, dinettes, much, it's a much nicer than just going into a standard hotel room. So we're happy to provide that and all of the moving expenses and everything that's needed to make that transition happen.
Excellent, thank you for that. Commissioner Lewis, yes?
Yes, thanks for the report, Nicole. The only thing I didn't hear is the occupancy date, estimated occupancy date for Yaquena Hall.
Yaquena Hall is a twelve-to-thirteen-month turnaround for construction, and I should note that Yaquena Hall is a historic preservation, that's a low-income housing historic preservation, so much of that building is being historically preserved, and we're very excited to bring it back to life because it's the old nurse's quarters to the state hospital, and many of the features we're trying to incorporate but make it a new, refreshed building, including new windows that are, are made to, designed to be historically looking. And so there is a little bit added time into that just to make sure that we're meeting all of our historical requirements, but we do anticipate having that done in twelve to thirteen months.
Excellent, any other questions for Ms. Yoots? Commissioner Leung?
Thank you. I had a few questions about the program management report. Is that a good time to ask about those? Okay, so I had three comments slash questions, and my first one is, you know, first of all, thank you always for the comprehensive updates. Really appreciate hearing all the wonderful things that the Salem Housing Authority is doing for, for our community. I read in the Salem Housing Authority is now open again, and so my question is, is it by appointment, or can people just walk in now? That's the first question.
Actually, thank you for asking that. That is something I was going to touch on tonight. We are open and access to any individuals that need assistance. We've kind of done this as a soft opening to help with COVID-nineteen requirements and ensure that we don't exceed our lobby capacity and due to the inclement weather, we don't want to have lots of individuals standing outside for long periods of time. So if individuals need additional assistance, they're happy to come to our door. Our front desk staff will actually go out, assist, and see if that's something they are just handing off information if they need to come in. And then we do full contact tracing when they come into the building so that we have all that documented as well. We actually have remodeled it to be completely COVID-friendly into the near future. We have COVID-friendly conference rooms and meeting rooms that are designed for privacy of individuals as well as the safety of individuals for any health concerns moving forward. We've also added the self-service kiosk, which we hope will be a great addition into the future, and we hope to expand that into other locations as time goes on. So yes, we're ready to, we, we've been, I should clarify that, we've been open the entire time during COVID. Our lobby has not been open, but the staff have been working diligently this entire COVID pandemic.
Thank you. I'm probably going to be asking all the questions that you're going to be reporting on, so apologies if I'm doing that ahead of time. The next up, I saw in the report that there is security deposit assistance that's available, and it looks like people would have to apply for the funding on their webpage, but let's say somebody doesn't have access to the internet or they need language assistance. Is there another way to support those individuals?
Absolutely, that's, that's one way that we encourage them to come into the agency, or, and we'll be happy to either set up to have an interpreter or language line assist us, and we can do a handwrote document or fill it in with their assistance online with them.
Great, and the last one, it actually has to do with the housing navigators. So I'm thrilled to see that with the extra funding from the legislature, the Salem Housing Authority is going to be hiring in addition to more navigators with the current housing navigator that's already working. So let's say that once the one million dollars utilized, what are the plans to try and either maintain those current navigators or possibly increase the number of navigators?
So with that one million dollar pass-through grant from the state of Oregon through the city, that's actually also going to assist us in continuing to stabilize our HREP, our homeless rental assistance clients that were, went through this last year in the pandemic, and it was difficult to either get them into drug and alcohol treatment or get the necessary documents ID, and just further their stabilization, stabilization without putting them back out without that wraparound services in twelve months. So a portion of that funding will go to that and the staff that maintain that program. The landlord navigator program I cannot speak enough about, and we've actually been contacted about this program since we've implemented it because it's been a huge, it's, it's been a huge relief to our clients, and that's probably the best thing to hear, and our navigator currently is named Nikki. She does a wonderful job. She spends hours and hours, countless hours, on the phone, and the responses we're getting is that they, from the, the clients is that they don't feel like they could have done it without her because she really works to take all the barriers that they have. Maybe they're not, they're not homeless rental assistance clients, they're our everyday section eight voucher holders, but they're getting a little bit extra step in help and trying to match them with programs or apartment complexes that they have a better chance of being accepted instead of going from place to place and place and being denied, and the application fees are astronomical these days. So for long-term, our goal is to continue to find grant funding or additional sources to keep those positions there. They're, they're invaluable, both those and the, and the homeless navigators.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Yoots, did you have other comments before we go back to questions, or did you want to just keep going with questions?
We can just keep going with questions. I think we touched on much of what I was going to talk about.
Excellent. Guest Counselor Sores?
Thank you, Chair Hoi. Ms. Yoots, I have a question about the HREP statistics. Being not familiar with all the programs, I find that graph a little hard to read. So is that eighty-six point three six percent that is highlighted there? Is that the, is that saying that eighty-six percent of the hundred people that you, that the city's been targeting to house, to shelter, are successfully in the program right now?
That is eighty-six point three six is since the conception of the program in two thousand and seventeen. We have maintained above the national average in response to, to being able to keep them stabilized.
Okay, thank you. And then for like, example, the housed to death, the enrolled and served?
Yes.
The number is different there, and can you, can you just explain to me why the number is different there?
Absolutely. So let me explain this graph a little bit more for you. So that enrolled is the actual individuals that met the criteria for homeless rental assistance programs. They were the ones who were considered trimorbid, meaning they had been homeless over three to five years. Many of them have been homeless many more years than that. They have some sort of drug and alcohol addiction or, and some sort of disability. So the ones that are enrolled meet the requirements for coordinated entry that say they can enroll in the homeless rental assistance program. Some individuals come with family members, whether that's children, spouses, wives, partners, whatever it may be. That's where your number increases to the served because we're, just because they're in the household, we're not going to serve them. We still serve the entire household, but we try to delineate the two different numbers to make sure that these were the actual individuals that qualified for the program and the amounts that we're serving because they are in the household.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ms. Yoots? Ms. Yoots, did you have anything else for us this evening?
The only thing that I wanted to mention is that the Housing Authority is steadily going through the pandemic and still trying to meet all of our clients' needs during these holidays, and including things like shop with a cop and and we're, this time is very busy for our agency in coordinating all the efforts to make sure those that are, are in need this year are going to get met. So we're, that, even though with COVID-nineteen and not all the programs are serving as they used to, we're still making those connections to help our families.
Excellent, and I really appreciate your efforts. I know it's a difficult time right now, and you and your staff are just doing amazing work, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, seeing nothing else on our agenda, we are adjourned.
Well, that was your good news on Yaquena Hall. That was, that was very good to hear. That has been a long time coming. Congratulations to Ms. Yoots and her staff and to the Housing Authority on riding that one through. It has been very, very troublesome. I'm going to call the Urban Renewal Agency meeting for Monday, November twenty-second to order. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Board Member Stapleton?
Here.
Board Member Anderson?
Here.
Board Member Phillips?
Here.
Board Member Leung?
Here.
Board Member Gonzalez?
Here.
Board Member Hoi?
Here.
Board Member Nordike is absent. Guest Counselor Sores?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
Chair Bennett?
Here. Counselor Hoi, any additions or deletions?
No.
I have no public comment in the consent calendar, please.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Okay.
Second by Stapleton.
So this evening we have item three point one A, the October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one draft Urban Renewal Agency Minutes, and that concludes the consent calendar, possibly the world's shortest.
Very close. Well, is there any discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead then and have the roll call.
Board Member Lewis?
Aye.
Board Member Stapleton?
Aye.
Board Member Anderson?
Aye.
Board Member Phillips?
Aye.
Board Member Leung?
Aye.
Board Member Gonzalez?
Aye.
Board Member Hoi?
Aye.
Board Member Nordike is absent. Chair Bennett?
Here. Okay. Any additions? Yeah, I, are there any additions to the agenda or deletions, Chris?
For City Council?
Ah, yeah. Did I not call that to order?
No, we haven't adjourned the Urban Renewal yet.
Okay, I, I apologize. I've been a little ahead of myself here. The Housing, the Urban Renewal Agency is adjourned. And move ahead with the Salem City Council for November twenty-second. And the roll call, please.
Counselor Stapleton?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Present.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Leung?
Here.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Here.
Counselor Hoi?
Here.
Counselor Nordike is absent. Guest Counselor Sores?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Bennett?
Here. Okay. Well, Evan, welcome to the meeting. I look forward to hearing from you on each of the elements tonight and all your thoughts, so feel comfortable sharing. Chris, any additions or deletions?
Yes, I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda. Second.
Second Phillips?
We have item five A, which is a policing update related to recent assessments, trust-building efforts, and staffing analysis, and item six B, reallocation of fiscal year twenty-one dash twenty-two capital improvement plan, project Pringle Parkade lighting upgrade funds. That's a revised report attached.
Okay, any, any discussion? And would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Hoi?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike? Is absent, excuse me. Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, it's chance for council and city manager comment. Any counselors with comments they'd like to share this evening? Counselor Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. I just, you know, we're approaching the holiday season, so as an emergency room doctor, I'd like to once again really encourage people to take advantage of the safe, free, and available COVID-nineteen vaccines. I think it's been recently approved that everybody eighteen and up can get a booster shot, and I think that we really want to encourage people to consider doing that because we've hit that kind of plateau point, and we'd like to prevent any additional increases in case rates. Additionally, you know, kids five and up are now eligible for their first and second shots. So, you know, everybody in that age group, these, these vaccines are safe, effective, free, convenient, rigorously studied. You know, my kids are vaccinated. We certainly, as healthcare providers, are encouraging everybody to talk to their doctors and avail themselves of those things to get themselves protected from this awful virus. So that's my thoughts.
Can you get it at the hospital or the Salem Health? Are you guys passing them out, or are you going to send them to the poor pharmacies to line up?
So it is widely available. I believe the Salem Health is doing a mobile clinic.
Where is it?
And just go to their webpage, but it's widely available in the pharmacies, and you can talk to primary care providers. I believe within the first, you know, week or two, ten percent of all kids in the state had already gotten themselves their first shot. So it's, it's going to take a little bit of time, but with patience, you know, that it's going to be more and more available.
But not through the hospital?
So, I mean, I think at this point, it's widely known that if you're already like in the emergency room for another issue and you would like to get your COVID-nineteen vaccine, for the most part, you can, but I wouldn't recommend that people go to the emergency room just for that purpose. It's kind of expensive. But if you're already there and you'd like to get it, you know, we, we can give them.
I, I wasn't thinking of the emergency room so much as do you all have a clinic where you're offering the shot for, we now have such a large group of people eligible, you, you know, sort of safe, easy, convenient. You're, for a lot of folks, you guys are the big, the big player in town. I just wondered if you all are involved in this.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would predict that many of the Salem Health clinics do have it, but I don't have a direct role like in kind of knowing what is available at this time for, for those individual clinics. But my guess is if they don't have it now, they will in the near future. So just, you know, stay in close communication with your primary care provider.
But right now, if you want to get it done, go to your local pharmacy. Or is there anywhere else to go than your local pharmacy right now that people could get to tomorrow morning?
You know, it's a really good question. I, I don't have a specific recommendation, but I know that Salem Hospital, Salem Health does have these mobile vaccine clinics.
Okay.
So if they go to the front page, there's their, their answers there, and the other place I would direct people to go to is the Oregon Health Authority.
Okay.
They have these things pretty much laid out as, as much as it can be. But these are good questions. I'm sorry, I don't have the, the specific.
No, no, that's okay.
My wheelhouse and the ED.
I appreciate you encouraging it. I just was thinking maybe we could help and find it real quickly. But I think it is probably your, your local pharmacy or your, your family physician, or probably your, right now, your quickest, most direct shot at getting a shot, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thanks, Trevor, very much. Anyone else? Counselor Leung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To kind of follow up on your last question about availability of vaccines, Counselor Phillips was right, you could go to the OHA webpage. It actually has a link, a calendar, I believe, now that shows where you could go in the community. So community-based organizations are also offering the vaccines sometimes with food boxes and events. And actually, there's one up in, not in Salem, but in Beaverton this Tuesday for folks who might want a food box and/or get a vaccine at the same time. So that's also available for folks. I strongly recommend taking a look at there if they do not have a primary care provider or not feel comfortable going to a pharmacy. I have, so I have like four specific comments I wanted to make, kind of echoing a little bit with what Counselor Phillips has said. You know, we are now in the second year in a row that we're going into this pandemic. Oregon has now recorded five thousand seventeen COVID-nineteen-related deaths, with a hundred and three who died as of this morning. Some of you have lost loved ones, your grandparents, your aunties, your uncles, cousins, even your children, perhaps your parents, even your best friend or the neighbor that you once greeted in the morning when you would head out to work. Perhaps you've lost patients or even clients you've worked with. Whether or not you believe in COVID-nineteen or not, COVID-nineteen does not discriminate. But one thing does remain. As Counselor Phillips has said, vaccines have been shown to be effective against extremely severe cases of COVID-nineteen. And our ICUs are still at capacity, with a majority of people who are in ICU who are unvaccinated. And I know this because of what happened to members of my family who died before the vaccine was available. Family members, some who are healthy, some who are not, who died before they could get it. And I continue to witness community members who die and who are still unvaccinated. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but please get vaccinated. Please get the booster. Save a life, save your life, or save somebody else's. Moving on from there, if any of you have this Friday off and you do not plan to go shopping anywhere for Black Friday, the local state parks are free to visit. The Oregon State Park system is waiving all parking fees at the twenty-six parks throughout the state that they normally charge five dollars when you leave a vehicle. So instead of paying five dollars for a day, and if you're not shopping, go and explore a park for free and get out there, get some fresh air. Recognizing that this year continues to be challenging for families, the Salvation Army, the Toy and Joy Program, or the equivalent of the Toys for Tots, I think is what it's called, is resuming the Salem Kaiser area. The notice just went out today, so if your family is seeking holiday assistance, including a meal box and gifts for your children between the ages of zero to twelve years old, you could call either five zero three, five eight five, six six eight eight, or you could go online at www.sktoyjoy.org to schedule an appointment or to register. There are only a limited number of days to be able to go in, starting on December first. There will be specific documents that are required, such as proof of an address and proof of all children, for example, a birth certificate or their OHP cards. There's other things that can be shown, but you just have to work with the Salem Kaiser, specifically their Salvation Army, on the information. The last thing I wanted to comment on, and I wasn't sure if I was even going to make any comments on this, but I'm going to. Tonight I am thinking of the families of Joseph Rosenbaum of Kennesaw and twenty-six-year-old Anthony Hoover of Silver Lake, Wisconsin, both who were shot and killed by Kyle Rittenhouse. The trial ended on Monday. But the loss of these two men will forever be felt by their families and their communities. And we continue to see the injustice of the criminal justice system, where once again confirms the belief that there are two justice systems, one for white people and another for black people. And people are angry. And eyes are now turned towards another national trial, that of the killers of Arnaub Arbery, a black man who was mowed down and shot down by three, by black, by three white men. Earlier this year, the city of Salem passed a resolution declaring racism as a public health crisis. Ian, if racism doesn't happen to you, it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. If you have not seen it, it still doesn't mean it does not exist. Racism exists and it permeates everywhere, from institutions to our government, to the personal, to our communities. I urge everyone to call it out for what it is. Don't stay silent, because otherwise, we're just as guilty as those who are perpetuating it. Hate has no place in Salem. Love wins. So let's get at it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Anderson?
Uh, I want to thank Counselor Leung for her comments, and I agree with them on both the trials completely. I didn't think I would comment on them either because we're really here doing the city's business.
City of Salem, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, but.
I just wanted to remind you.
Well, thanks. I don't think you need to, Mr. Mayor, but thank you anyway. I understand what we're here for, and I, in fact, I said that.
Yeah, good.
So, but we have passed a resolution condemning white supremacy, condemning institutional racism and the, and the also the rev- uh, resolution by Counselor Leung about uh racism is a public health crisis. And I think this is just an example and I of what happens in the nation. And I am thankful and hopeful. I'm thankful that it hasn't happened here in Salem, and I'm hopeful with the policies and with our police department, and we'll hear from the chief later, that it will not happen in Salem. This is not the way to live. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Leung and Counselor Anderson for your comments. Appreciate them and support them. Uh, I just wanted to mention, I just hope, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving uh coming up this week and a holiday season. I, I just sort of following up on Counselor Phillips' remarks. Uh, my family, as I think I've mentioned uh previously, we lost a family member to COVID before the vaccines were available, and it's um last year, we decided to not have a, a, a family Thanksgiving dinner because uh it was just too risky. And this year, we have decided to gather, and I'm really looking forward to it. But we've also made the decision to only gather with members of our family who are vaccinated. And unfortunately, that doesn't include everyone, but that includes the vast majority of my family members. And I'm really excited to be able to spend time with them. We have made, I think, a, a decision that's in everybody's best interest to gather, um, because we have vulnerable family members. Um, I got my booster two or three weeks ago, and it was uh really easy, uh almost no side effect. I encourage people to do so. We're also taking the extra step uh because of our vulnerable family members. Uh, we're all doing a home COVID test uh before we, before we gather. So just to, as an abundance precaution, so I just wanted to toss that out there as an idea and ways people can gather safely with family and be in close contact and enjoy this holiday. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. Yate Sherene Jose Gonzalez. And for those that don't know, I always introduce myself in multiple languages today to honor our city's longtime diversity. Today, I spoke Navajo to honor our indigenous people, which we'll be thinking of when our family dines together on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, very good. Uh. Mr. Powers?
I think guest Counselor uh Source had something to say.
Okay, I missed it. I'm sorry.
No, no worries, Mayor. Uh, thank you. I just wanted to really quick introduce myself. Hello, everyone. Uh, my name's Evan Source. I'm uh filling in for Counselor Nordeik, who unfortunately sends her regrets. Uh, she's on a plane right now to visit some extended family for the holiday. And I just wanted to uh say thank you for the opportunity. Um, I'm the Ward Seven Budget uh committee member and a former West Salem Neighborhood Association Chair. So I've been around city um issues before, but uh look forward to the opportunity. And while I'm here, um, just also wanted to give a shout out to uh, this weekend is also free fishing weekend or free crabbing weekend in the state of Oregon. So if you're going to gather with loved ones or not, um, and you love fishing or crabbing, this is the weekend to do it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm sorry, if anyone, I, I don't see anyone else right now. Okay, Mr. Powers?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh counselors. For those who aren't busy visiting parks or shopping or, or crabbing and, and choose to rake what leaves are left, a friendly reminder to please not rake the leaves into the streets. Uh, the, the leaves that fall uh from your yard to the curb are the responsibility of that property owner. And once you rake up the leaves, you can compost them, you can put them in the green bins, you can haul them to the Brown Island uh landfill, which will be having, the city will be having the second uh leaf haul on December eleventh. The first was just this past Saturday. And, and to please uh dispose of the leaf properly, so we don't contribute, so you're not contributing to the uh, the localized flooding or, or uh dangerous conditions that can be created by certainly large amounts of leaves. Oh, we, we will have uh an update for council per uh council's request to uh examine all possible building locations and property locations for, for shelter. Uh, we will have that uh on your agenda for December sixth. Uh, we will be activating the uh city-owned building at eleven eighty-five Twenty-Second Avenue Southeast. Uh, the building that we acquired, the city acquired for use as a navigation center, we will be activating that as a, a warming center. And last, as we do approach uh the various holidays that are important to our, our community, uh, I would like to uh call on Chief Niblock to, you know, provide a, a, a serious but very essential reminder regarding regarding fire safety and also a respectful update, please, chief, on, on the tragic event that occurred recently in West Salem.
Thank you, uh City Manager Powers, uh Mayor and counselors. Uh, just a quick, uh, brief update. Uh, Salem Police uh just recently released a uh, the, a press release, um, releasing the names of the individuals who um were deceased in a fire on Friday morning about seven fifty-five AM. And so thirty-three-year-old male and a twenty-five-year-old female, um, house fire reported, uh, light smoke showing. Um, still under investigation. The cause is still under investigation. Um, and uh, so tragedy, obviously, anytime we, we lose lives uh in, in a structured fire incident. Um, the one thing I would implore people is please make sure you have a working smoke detector in your home. Um, and we offer free smoke detectors to people who can't afford them. Um, if you call our main line, um, five eight eight, six two four five, uh, we can get you set up. We'll come out, we'll help install the smoke detector, we'll give it to you for free. So um, there's no excuse not to have one. And um, while this is still under investigation, it appears there was not a working smoke detector in the structure, which would have woken them up um before they were overcome. So uh tragedy, but uh we really hope people will take heart and uh and really consider if they don't have smoke detectors, to get ahold of us, and we'll get out and we'll put one in. It's really important. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Yeah, that was, uh, that was really, really sad. Mr. Powers is uh, Ms. Rutherford available to just talk about what our Christmas lighting future looks like downtown? Is that possible? Ah, Merry Christmas, Kristen.
It is possible. See your Christmas wish. There you go. I'm Kristen Rutherford. I'm the city's urban development director. Uh, Christmas lighting, the, the city-owned Christmas lights um are, are not going up. They haven't gone up the last couple of years for a couple of reasons. Uh, we have, most of the lights no longer work. We haven't purchased replacement lights because our support in this infrastructure downtown has so many missing links, then we're filling in those gaps as we build out the streetscape project. What we did do a couple of years ago is purchase a bunch of lights that we have um done a long-term loan to the Salem Main Street Association. And then they, they've taken on that responsibility of contacting the businesses and uh lending out the lights that we purchased to the businesses so that they can put them up. I know that they're in the process of doing that right now.
Great, great. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Anyone else? Comments? Okay. We'll move on then to proclamations. Uh, receiving this uh proclamation will be Tom uh Nate Nahon, president of the uh Salem Main Street Association. So we can ask Tom how it's, how it's going in terms of the lighting, but uh whereas small businesses form the backbone of our local economy, generating jobs and improving the quality of life for residents. And whereas Small Business Saturday is a nationwide campaign to cultivate business for small merchants on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And whereas ninety-four percent of consumers in the United States value the contributions of small businesses that they make in their community, and whereas the city of Salem supports the efforts of local small businesses and recognizes the critical role they play in our community. And whereas Small Business Saturday will stimulate economic growth locally for small merchants by following in the tradition of Black Friday and Cyber Monday, two of the busiest shopping days of the year. Now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the city of Salem, to hereby proclaim November twenty-seventh as Small Business Saturday and urge residents to support small, independently-owned businesses and local merchants on this day and throughout the year. And uh, let's see, Tom, are you there?
Yes, I am. Hi.
Hi, do you want to, do you want to say anything about small business?
Well, share a couple of things. First of all, the city lights, yeah, we've been successful. We've, uh, we've uh loaned out all of the strings of lights that the city purchases, and we're buying some more ourselves, because we ran out and we have some more demand, so we're going to be handing some more out, in fact.
Great, great.
Uh, yes, uh, you know, our board is, is comprised of almost half, uh, of our board is comprised of small business owners. And they really are the, the heart of our downtown. They, they support our community and make our downtown unique with so many interesting small businesses. And so I just appreciate, you know, the proclamation, and I, and I urge everyone to step up and support our small businesses because they support us and many of, of the projects that are important to Salem.
And there's going to be lots and lots of free parking and uh all kinds of activities, I assume, on Saturday.
There is.
Excellent, okay. Any questions for Tom on uh any particular merchant you'd like to be visiting this Saturday? Okay, very good. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I have a presentation. This is, we're continuing on with volunteer recognition presentations. This is the second iteration of the twenty-twenty-one Volunteer Recognition Award Presentations, and each year, we recognize great volunteers in our community by hosting a volunteer recognition event. Unfortunately, we've been unable to host an in-person event the past couple of years. We're doing the next best thing and recording my brief presentations to the recipients. I recently presented awards to numerous individuals and groups, including At Your Service Awards to Peggy Zorn, Dave Newman, and the Library Art Reinstallation Team. I also presented the Mayor's Merit Awards to Monica Pacheco and Meals on Wheels volunteers. All of these people are making an incredible difference in our community. There's a short video of these five award presentation. There will be more recognition presentations featured at the December sixth and thirteen meetings. So if we could go ahead with those. There we go. Here at the Children's Library, uh, one of the real highlights for kids has been the dollhouse. And I'm here with Peggy Zorn, who did the work this year, uh, bringing it kind of up to a really high standard. It uh really is part of the renovation of the main library during the twenty-twenty-one season. And the youth services team really believed it was an ideal time to renovate this Victorian dollhouse that's been a beloved part of the library since the nineteen eighties. This is one of those places kids quickly gravitate when they come to this part of the library. After receiving a grant from the library, Salem Library Foundation, uh Peggy Zorn uh was recommended as an expert miniaturist.
Well, it's been exciting for me to be able to volunteer in an area that I love. I've worked in miniatures for thirty-five years and um part of me, it's just in my soul. And so to be able to do this and have people enjoy it. There's so many of us that do a lot of projects, but then they sit at our homes. It's fun to see the smiles on faces.
Well, I'm really pleased to be here with uh Dave Newman and Cody Wildman. Uh, Dave is uh the recipient this year of the Volunteer Recognition Award At Your Service. And he was nominated by Cody, uh, who is the uh project, a project leader at the signs and sweeping section in the city streets programs. Uh, Dave serves as a one-man adopt-a-street group. Uh, he roams the city in his spare time picking up trash. Wow. He'll even clean up specific areas if asked by public work staff, often Cody, to do it. Initially, the trash Dave collected wasn't being tracked. We really didn't know how much he was picking up. However, in twenty-ten, staff started estimating the garbage, and to date, it totals eighteen thousand, three hundred and fifty pounds, which is genuinely amazing.
Well, I guess I started this ten years ago. I was driving school bus for Salem Kaiser. And it's a sit-down job, so I was looking for something to, to get me a little more active. And at the same time, I was driving my routes and noticing all the trash along the street, and it took me almost a month to put those two together. Well, I just go out and pick up stuff. I guess the the one lesson we can take out of this is that you look around, find something you can do, and do it.
Well, I'm just really pleased uh as part of this year's twenty-twenty-one volunteer uh recognition uh program to salute with the At Your Service Award, the Library Artwork Reinstallation Team. The team, okay? Uh, the Library uh Reinstallation Team is a group comprised of members from the Salem Public Art Commission. They're the collection subcommittee and the Salem Library Foundation. Eileen Cotter Howell, Paula Booth, Rachel Boogie, Eric West, and Gretchen Cope. This team generously donated its time and energy, ensuring the seamless integration of two collections of public art into the newly renovated library.
This installation, reinstallation, took about almost two years to, to do from start to finish. Uh, there are two collections. One belongs to the foundation, the Salem Public Library Foundation. And the other one belongs to the city of Salem. It's a Salem Public Art Collection. And we treated the collections, two collections, as one. The way that we design it is done the same way that an artist does a painting, which is basically look to the colors and uh the various motifs that run through the artworks and carry them from one artwork to the next.
Well, I'm really pleased to be here for this presentation of our Volunteer Recognition Award uh tw- for twenty-twenty-one. This is the Mayor's Merit Award, and we're giving it to Monica Pacheco. She's president of the Salem Fire Foundation and uh really excited about having a chance to honor her. She serves as the president, as I mentioned, of the Fire Foundation. She saw the foundation through the challenges of COVID nineteen, which is no easy task, and then agreed to stay on as president for an additional year. Monica leads the foundation's Wheels for Heroes program, which provides free estate planning services. services to City of Salem firefighters. The attorneys working with the program recently hit in kind donations of more than $10,000. Monica also served on the City of Salem Task Force that considered possible revenue alternatives to balance the 2018-19 budget.
I saw there was a need for the Wheels for Heroes program for the fire department. I had been doing Wheels for Heroes for the police department and refused to do them until the fire department was done. And so they challenged me and I joined the board and started the program. My brother and his family are firefighter family, and that really is true to my heart. They're not here in town, but it's my way of giving back to my community and supporting
Well, I'm really pleased to be here for the 2021 Volunteer Recognition Award, the next one in our series. This one's special to me. It's the Mayor's Merit Award. And we're awarding it to Meals on Wheels volunteers. They've continued, by the way, to deliver food to those in need under the extreme circumstances we've experienced for the past year and a half, almost two years now. Meals are made fresh each day in the kitchen here at Center 50 Plus with a focus on specific nutritional needs of seniors. Meals on Wheels also runs two senior community meals at Center 50 Plus and South Salem Senior Center. These are on hold at this time due to COVID, but seniors can still pick up food to go at both locations. These committed volunteers, some of whom have been delivering meals for 20 years, help promote the health, independence, and social well-being of seniors and disabled adults in the community.
Many of us are retired and we have time to help others in our community. And quite honestly, it is an absolute luxury to be able to do that if you have the time available. It's hard to imagine, I think, for most of us that we wouldn't do something to help those of us, those who are in our communities, who have trouble doing well at their homes or otherwise have difficulty getting regular meals. Many of them do wish to have some interaction. There are those we've visited with and have
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much for your attention to that. This has just been a, this is, we've got such an outstanding group of volunteers and thanks to our committee that that deals with these volunteer recognition awards. It's through our Boards and Commissions Committee. So any of you who are interested in participating in this activity, please let me know as we begin appointing this next year's committee members. But it's a, these are just absolutely great programs that serve our, our community with volunteer hours that are just in a huge range. Without them, we'd be in real trouble trying to fill a lot of the need we see out in the community. So thank you again for the opportunity to show those. And for, to Kathy Enzberg in our office, who's been doing those videos. She's just doing a bang-up job. Really appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on then to public comment. This is a comment on issues on the agenda this evening. I don't have any folks who've applied or signed up just to address the council on other issues. So Ian Lawellin is commenting on 3.2A. Ian, there you are.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bennett. I appreciate it. I'll be very brief. I know you guys are busy. Appreciate you having me this evening. I'm with Deacon Development. I'm their finance manager. We own the Nordstrom Building at Salem Center. And we've submitted a multiple unit housing tax incentive program application. And I understand you'll be considering it this evening, so I just thought it appropriate to briefly highlight the project real quickly. Back in 2019, we purchased the Nordstrom Building downtown there. And after two pretty challenging years of trying to re-tenant the building, we decided to investigate redeveloping the property into an apartment building. We spent about 12 months speaking with our consultants and local experts in Salem, doing quite a bit of market research. The more we learned, the more excited we got about that opportunity. And we continued to really believe redeveloping that empty building would help have a transformative impact on the downtown area and really bring more energy and traffic to that area. So we're really excited about it. We're to the point now where the current design consists of about 157 units. It really features a wide mix of unit types. There's studios that are 350 square feet up to 600 square feet, and then there's two bedrooms that are 600 square feet, almost up to 900 square feet. So there's really a great coverage in the types of units, the layouts, really what type of tenant would attract. And that was intentionally done to attract a broad range of demographics and kind of help cultivate economic diversity to that apartment building. So that was the intention. One other signature item I'd like to mention is that we're planning to put a 3,000-square-foot rooftop deck uptown in open space. We really think that that's a great opportunity to bring the community together, gather and provide for positive community growth. And the deck will be, it'll have some nice amenities, look down over the park there and upriver. So we're pretty excited about the opportunity. We genuinely believe the project to be a tremendous benefit of, you know, to the ongoing transformation of the downtown area. We believe it directly serves numerous public benefits that we further outlined in our formal application there. And frankly, you know, the approval of the application would also help make economic sense for the project. So I appreciate your time, really grateful for your consideration. And we're excited about the opportunity to be part of the continued growth down there. So thank you.
Thank you, Ian. We're really pleased, too, that you're taking this project on. That's one of those situations that arose when Nordstrom left, that created an empty building that I think had everyone really worried about what was happening downtown. And you and your partners stepping up has really been a tremendous benefit, if nothing else than to the morale of the downtown and the community that we're going to see a very new and different development there. So congratulations. I'm hopeful we'll be able to help you out on this tonight. Counselor Anderson?
I echo the mayor's comments, Mr. Lawellin. I'd also just, I see that there's 157 dwelling units, and some of those will have more than one person in it. So I'm wondering if you could tell us what you would expect when it's fully leased out? How many people you're going to have there, assuming that there may be more than one person in the bigger apartments or even the one-bedroom apartments?
Yeah, great question. So we have 113 studios, 37 one-bedroom units. You know, maybe half of those have two people living in them. So I'm just doing some quick math here. Seven two-bedrooms, maybe two and a half people in each of those. So you're probably, you know, 200, 200 adults living down there would be my guess.
Wow.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, we'll be talking more about this when the issue comes up in front of us later in the agenda. So if there's no further questions, Angela Jones? Angela's going to talk about 3.2B, similar topic.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and council members. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Angela Jones. My address is 227 and 229 Commercial Street, Northeast Salem, Oregon, and I am in Ward 1. I just wanted to attend the council tonight because I am applying also for a multi-unit tax incentive. And I just wanted to be available to answer any questions that the council members or the mayor may have of me. Just be available to you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions right now that they would want to? I know we haven't addressed this yet, so I'm sure you'll be here, Ms. Jones, if anyone has any.
Yes, I will.
When this, when this comes up on the agenda. So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Anderson, 7.1A.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Steve Anderson, co-chair Edgewater Partners, 3240 Geller Road Northwest in Salem. Here tonight, just to basically share the appreciation of the community and the Edgewater District for the hard work of Bryce Bishop and staff as they've gone through this development code. They have worked hard with the community to help us develop and maintain the pedestrian-friendly walkability of the Edgewater Second Street overlay zone. And that has been very helpful. On another note, there was an issue and councillor statement was not there, but at our last Edgewater Partner meeting, we talked about one of the provisions in that zone to allow microhousing. And wanted to let the council know that the community is strongly supportive of that effort and Church at the Park. The observations was that this area has, has parking, it has transportation, it has food, it has medical resources. And the community overall supports helping those that are less fortunate in a way that is being proposed by this micro shelter proposed proposal. So we want to let you know that as this goes forward, the community is strongly in support of that. And then a third note relative to the development code, staff made the recommendation that within this change for middle housing, that there would be the requirement for at least one parking space. Planning Commission overruled that in their recommendations. We would ask that you reconsider the staff recommendation. Just looking simply at a single-family residential area and the addition of triplexes, duplexes, as that goes forward, that is a great way to infill, but not requiring, but allowing the developer to make that decision. We think that that pressure to have parking in the community would be detrimental to this going forward. If you look at the changes, there are going to be some people in the community that find this a little problematic, but we think that at least one parking place, moving down to one car. But we would ask the council, think about it, talk to your constituents, but in the single-family zones, not to have at least one parking place as the area infills seems like a poor policy. So we would like you to consider that that would be a requirement. It makes the aesthetics, it makes it better to fit into that development. So basically, we're here to thank staff for their hard work and recommend council that you go forward and approve their efforts. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any questions? Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and Mr. Anderson for your comments. And I appreciate your stating out loud your support for the micro shelter communities. I really do. That's important that a community leader step up and voice that out loud. I really appreciate you saying that. I'm wondering, do you have a specific property in mind there or are you just, were you speaking in general terms? Or is there a specific property that's under consideration? I'm not aware of.
There isn't right now. There is the old cannery area that could possibly be worked out. But we basically wanted to say that in terms of some of the issues that happen in West Salem, the Edgewater District, one of the poorer areas in town, definitely thinks that it's a good idea. And we wanted to let council know that there would be very little opposition to that, that they just think that we need to step up and help others. And we like the program.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Great. Thank, thank you very much, Steve. And then Chain Griggs, Chair of the Planning Commission here on 6D. Chain?
Yes. Hey, Mayor Bennett and councilors. My name is Chain Griggs. I live at 3896 St. Andrews Loop, and I'm president of the Salem Planning Commission. As you know, the Planning Commission serves in an advisory capacity to your decisions that may impact the growth and orderly development of our city. Each year, we are required to report to you on the past year's activity, which I'm prepared to do today. As noted, the commission held public hearings on 13 quasi-judicial land use applications, including comprehensive plan and zone changes, Fairview refinement plan amendments, design reviews, and three appeals. We also had four work sessions on the draft updates to the Unified Development Code, more easily said, the UDC. And examples of those proposed changes are amendments to include the expansion of the number and type of poultry allowed in single residential areas and to provide options for improved bicycle parking. Quite a few things in between those two, but those are kind of the bookends. Additional proposed changes relates to the state's accommodation for middle housing. Examples of that are recommended elimination of required parking for middle housing that Mr. Anderson just mentioned, and we agreed with him. And the reduction of required parking for multifamily to one per, one space per unit. Currently, it's, I believe it's 1.5 spaces per unit. Yeah, let me go see. After that, I think one of the most, well, okay, then I'll go into design review. We've approved the design of several buildings downtown. I'm sure you guys have noticed all of them. One is the new four-story building that will be going in across the street from the new YMCA. That's intended to be housing for fed Oregon veterans. Another example is that three-story mixed-use building on Church Street for the Center for Hope and Safety. In addition to the 20 multifamily units, it'll also include a ground floor retail. And I think, and one of the most interesting redevelopments, and you hit on this during the Housing Authority meeting, is the redevelopment of that north campus of the Oregon State Hospital site. The commission reviewed the comprehensive plan change and zone change, the land division, and multifamily design review applications over the past few years for that development. This redevelopment included a large multifamily housing complex that we see going in right now in the interior. The residential homes would be on the periphery facing Park and D. We've talked, you talked about Yakinah Hall, so you're well, well up on that. And then there'll be the new city park on the northwest corner of that very large block. The vacant mixed-use zone portions on Center.
And I'm gonna just stop you for a second here. We've hit our three-minute mark.
I thought I had five.
Maybe that's it. They just did the time to, who knows on this?
Well, you know, y'all have the report and you know where to find me if you have questions.
Let me, let me wait just a second. Let's see what the, I thought it was five, too, but it went pretty, or it was a very fast five.
Oh, I, because I timed it. It's four minutes and 30 seconds.
Okay.
But I was like, okay, you know, it's really, y'all have the report. And it's, I think what I really wanted to highlight is, because you're, you're posing a question so I can respond right.
Dan, what's the, what's the time limit here?
Mr. Mayor, this is coming under public comments, so it's, it's three minutes, but if you'd like to let her respond to your question, you may.
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll respond to some, have you respond to some questions? You, you mentioned the poultry ordinance. Did you, did you add poultry or did you?
Yes, yes. There's certain kinds, like you cannot have a flamingo, for example, that's too big, but you can have quail. And then we had some feedback that.
And you have, though, those pink flamingos you put in the front yard.
You can have those.
You can have those.
They don't make any noise. And then they also, we also made some changes on the structure, recommended changes on the structures because one gentleman, I think it was Quail, he said, you know, quail are really small. We don't need the kind of enclosures that you are requiring for larger. Fascinating conversation.
Did you talk about rabbits and?
No.
Other kinds of animals?
No, poultry.
I've got an email about rabbits. I'll just alert you. It's, they're lurking out there, so.
What we expect you to, you know, we already have a list of next changes for the UDC.
Okay. Virginia, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you and the commission. When I got that report, it's just, it's fascinating being a city councilor because you just get to see behind the scenes on everything. And to go through that report and to see how much work goes into being on the planning commission. So thank you to all the volunteers who serve on that. It was really educational for me. I appreciate all of your time and attention to all of these details that then come to us in a way that, you know, we're taking in so much information, too. It's just so much more, I don't know how to say this, but we can take it in, right? In a really good way, you guys put it out for us. And so thank you for all that hard work and I really appreciate.
Well, I enjoyed working with you, Council Stapleton and Counselor Hoy on the Subcommittee. So that was entertaining. Yeah.
Anyone else?
I think Counselor Hoy.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chain. And I want to just express, kind of underscore what Council Stapleton said. I really appreciate the great work the Planning Commission has been doing. So you and all of the other commissioners, I think, are doing really, really solid work and I appreciate it. I, you, you were willing to take a deep dive into some really complex issues and it helps us understand. I, you, you were willing to take a deep dive into some really complex issues, and it helps us understand when we read what you've done and what you consider it really helps us in our roles. I just appreciate your very thoughtful work, so thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hoy. And just a reminder, y'all, we're gonna have two vacancies at the end of the year. So.
Yes.
Just a trigger. I, I, any other questions?
Well, just, just to join in the compliments, you cannot do, as a city council, you cannot do this job as it relates to the variety of issues you all deal with, without the great work you guys do. You and the staff in the planning department, working these issues out and, and really teasing out the issues, teasing out the solutions, all the rest of it that I know goes, having spent some years on the Planning Commission, how much work goes into this, just how much we appreciate it. It makes the work here at the council level a lot more consistent and coherent than it could be if we were just left to our own devices.
And I appreciate, I did have the kudos to the staff at the end, but couldn't get there, so I'm glad that you mentioned Lisa and Shelby and
Yeah.
the whole staff has been.
And Bryce.
And, oh.
Who is an absolute gem. That UDC is, I, I worked on that as well. That is just something else.
It's a monster.
It really is a monster.
Yeah.
Louis, do you have anything to say? You've spent a lot of time down there in Planning Commission.
Well, you know, I, it's funny, in the, in the late 2000s, 2008, 2009, we had a lot of meetings canceled. My sense is even with COVID, there hasn't been a lot of cancellations on the Planning Commission, which really shows how busy the City of Salem has remained over the last few years.
Thanks.
It's great. Are there, was there anything, Chain, that you, in your report, or in the process of putting it together, kind of want to alert us to, is coming at us, coming, besides our Salem and UDC? Are there other issues coming at us we ought to be prepared for?
No, no, I think it'll be interesting to see how the zoning amendments, proposed amendments, and the whole capital, Climate Action Plan rolls out in front of you. I know there's some controversial parts, but there has been a lot of give and take on that. And the last version that I saw, the one part that was pretty alarming to me on the national gas ban. There seems to be some meat, some wiggle room there, which is good. And I'd like to see that more of an incentive than, than anything else. But no, not really any other issues.
Okay.
Like in.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Really appreciate all the work you and your committee and the planning staff do on our behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move forward to the consent calendar. Councillor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of items 3.2A, pulled by Councillor Anderson, and 3.2B, pulled by Councillor Hoy.
Okay. Councillor Phillips, I heard you first. I really did.
I'm, I'm willing to let Stapleton have, Councillor Stapleton.
Once in a while, she's gotta be disappointed. It just, go ahead, Councillor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That leaves us with item 3.1A, the November 8, 2020 Draft City Council Minutes. 3.1B, November 15, 2020 Draft City Council Work Session Minutes. Item 3.3A, the Intergovernmental Agreement with Marion County for Stormwater Improvements Within Opensway Southeast. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Very good. And any questions, discussion? Okay, if the recorder please call the roll.
Councillor Nordike is absent. Councillor Lewis?
Aye.
Councillor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councillor Anderson?
Aye.
Councillor Phillips?
Aye.
Councillor Leon?
Aye.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councillor Hoy?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We will then move on to public hearings. Our first public hearing is 21-510. I'll turn that over to you, Amy.
The City Council will now conduct a public hearing to consider the petitioner-initiated annexation of territory located at 6565 Sunnyside Road Southeast. The criteria applicable to the decision is SRC 260.060C. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing, or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the parties and the City Council an opportunity to respond to that issue, precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. The hearing will begin with a staff presentation, and no individual signed up to testify.
Thank you. Pamela, are you, are?
I am here, yes. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Pamela Cole, planner with Community Development Department. Tonight, I'm presenting the staff report for annexation case number C 729 for territory at 6565 Sunnyside Road Southeast. I'd like to enter the staff report, attachments, and presentation into the record. The subject property is approximately 1.18 acres and is contiguous to the city limits on the northeast and then the east side. Because it's contiguous to city limits, annexation was required to obtain city services for the existing dwelling. The territory is designated developing residential in the comprehensive plan map, as are the adjacent properties, and others in the area are designated single-family residential. The property and adjacent properties are zoned Marion County Urban Transition, five acres, consistent with the developing residential comprehensive plan designation. Other properties in the area are either zoned RA Residential Agriculture or RS, Single Family Residential. And this territory will be zoned Residential Agriculture upon annexation. The property contains a single-family dwelling and is partially wooded. Other properties on that side of Sunnyside are similar. Creekside Golf Course is located to the north. Properties on the east side of Sunnyside have mostly been subdivided for single-family residential developments. Staff found that the proposed annexation met the criteria, including whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and statewide planning goals, allows early, efficient, timely provision of urban services, and serves the public interest. We had comments from Public Works that if the property is developed as defined in Chapter 200, an urban growth area preliminary declaration would be required. Parks, no additional parks are required, because Rees Park is nearby. The fire response time is six minutes, 30 seconds from Station 9. Finance, the total tax rate for the residents would increase. And Salem Kaiser Schools indicated that up to three students could be expected from development of the property, and they'd be eligible for transportation to Battle Creek, Judson, and Sprague. This is exempt from voter approval annexation, because it was submitted by the petitioners who are owners of the property, and it meets the other qualifications for exemption from voter approval. Of course, council has the final word on whether to annex the territory.
Okay, very good.
And therefore, staff recommends that council adopt the order that determines that the proposal meets the criteria, applies the city zoning, and approves withdrawal from Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
Okay. Very good. That, that really concludes the testimony on this. Since there is no public testimony, do you have any questions? Any, do councillors have any questions for Pamela on this project? Okay. Seeing none?
Does Councillor Source have a question?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. And thank you, Mayor. I do have a question. It's around the response time for fire. This has been something that I've heard our fire chief talk about a lot. And I don't, it, you know, six minutes and 30 seconds, I don't know what that means, if that's good or bad. And I've been reading others where it's lower, others that are higher. And so, is that something, I guess, like, where's that in the spectrum of like, you know, good or bad in six minutes? You know, just, you know.
It's on if you're having a heart attack, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like.
As news you can get, but.
Exactly. And so, like, are those, when we're looking to annex property and, you know, build the city, like, how much of that are we like, you know, things like that go into those considerations, you know?
That's a good question. Pamela, how much consideration did you give to extension of city services beyond water sewers, streets, sidewalk-type things in this, like these public safety services? How is that a factor?
Generally, the discussion is aimed toward whether the boundary makes sense and whether having different jurisdictions in the area covering different properties would be ideal. In this case, the fire protection would be transferred from Salem Suburban Rural to City of Salem, and most of the other properties in the area are also served by City of Salem. So we find.
Query the fire department. I, I remember at various times, the department is asked to comment on certain, certain kinds of land use action. I don't recall on annexations. Would this have gone to the fire department for comment?
Yes, annexations always go to the fire department. And as the councillor indicated, there's a range. So some properties are obviously going to be located closer to the fire station, so they're going to have a shorter response time. This one's a little on the outskirts, so the time is a little bit longer. I believe the other one I'm presenting tonight is about four minutes, so.
Right, right. Chief, did you want to comment on this?
Yes, I just wanted to add that if this is moving from Salem Suburban to City of Salem, we serve both jur, of those jurisdictions. So we're serving them already anyway for response. So, and we do look at all annexations that come through for response times for our service.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hopefully, over time, we will see reduction of those with, is that correct, Chief, that if we looked at long-range planning and the fire services, that we would see your, your, at least your goal is response time reduction? Is that fair to say?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. When we look at, when we look at the growth of the community and where we're expanding, we want to be able to provide, because this is being annexed into the city, our response times to Salem Suburban are longer, because they're a further distance away, and they understand that once it's in the city, they're gonna have the same expectation response times that the rest of the city has. So, yes, additional resources at some point will need to be added to be able to meet those needs.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Evan, for that question. That was, that was interesting. Any others? Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Councillor Leon, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to go with staff recommendations.
Second.
Second by Louis. Any discussion? Okay. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Councillor Lewis?
Aye.
Councillor Stapleton?
Aye.
Councillor Anderson?
Aye.
Councillor Phillips?
Aye.
Councillor Leon?
Aye.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councillor Hoy?
Aye.
Councillor Nordike is absent. Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to 4B 21-511, another public hearing. I'll call the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. And who is our staff person?
It's going to be Pamela Cole again.
Pamela Cole again, okay.
And I'll read the script. The City Council will now conduct a public hearing to consider the petitioner-initiated annexation of territory located at 4120 Fisher Road Northeast and adjacent lands. The criteria applicable to the decision is SRC 260.060C. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing, or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the parties and the City Council an opportunity to respond to the issue, precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval, precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. So the staff, the hearing will begin with staff presentation, and no individual signed up to testify. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela?
Yes, good evening. Again, I'm Pamela Cole, and I'm the case manager for this case, which includes an annexation as well as a concurrent zone change. I request that the report, attachments, presentation, and the Planning Commission's recommendation be entered into the record. In this case, the territory at Fisher Road, 4120 Fisher Road and adjacent lands is proposed for annexation. Generally, territory that's annexed to the city is automatically given the city comprehensive plan designation and zoning designation that are equivalent to the applicable county zoning in Table 260-1 of Salem Revised Code. Unless, there are several different circumstances. First, that the petitioner requests new designations that the equivalent city designation in the table is not consistent with the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, or that council proposes new designations. In this case, the comprehensive plan designation is multifamily residential. The cities are a residential agriculture or RS, single-family residential zones, would be equivalent to the Marion County Urban Development Zone, but those are inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And the Planning Commission recommended RM1, multiple-family residential, which is eight to 14 dwelling units per acre, which agrees with the applicant's proposal. This property is contiguous to city limits on the north side. And because it's contiguous to city limits, again, annexation would be required to obtain city services for future development. The territory legal description and map incorporate about 0.37 acres of right-of-way of Fisher Road Southeast. And this annexation would create an enclave on the west side of Fisher Road Northeast. So staff notified the property owner that would be affected, that their property might be annexed by the city in future. The subject property is designated multifamily and residential in the comprehensive plan, as well as most of the surrounding properties. Just to the south, there are some that are designated single-family residential. The zoning of Marion County Urban Development applies to this property, as well as to some others to the west and southwest and northeast. The property immediately to the south, the little small rectangle there, is Marion County Limited Residential. And then further south along Cooley Drive, a single-family residential. Property to the east, in that light green color, is Marion County RM, multiple-family residential. And other areas in the city nearby are zoned RM2 in the orange, and a few areas of RA, which are also a pale green color. The proposed zone change would be to RM1, and that would imply to the entire property. The property currently contains a single-family dwelling and some accessory buildings. The blue line in the center of the photograph indicates a creek. There's also a wetland channel mapped along that creek. The orange color is Hundred Year Flood Plain. So those are crossing the property from north to southeast and limit somewhat the density, which is one of the reasons why they selected RM1 instead of RM2, the higher-density zoning. The properties on the east side of Fisher Road, northeast are occupied by duplexes, a manufactured home park. There's some single-family dwellings and a future townhome development just to the north. And then on the west side of Fisher Road, we have more single-family dwellings. The Redwood Crossings Residential Care and Shelter Facility operated by Salem Housing Authority, and more apartments. Staff found again that the proposed annexation met the criteria. And in this case also, the Planning Commission found that the proposed land use designations met their applicable criteria. Therefore, they recommended to staff and to council that the RM1 designation. the RM1 designation be adopted. Their findings are attached to the staff report. We had comments in support from North Gate Neighborhood Association on this one. And similar to before, in this case, if this property is developed with multifamily, Public Works indicated we'd have street improvements and/or right-of-way dedication. Parks, we have Fisher Road Park, which is within the half-mile service area. In this case, fire response would be four-minute response time from Station 8. The tax rate would increase again for the persons residing on the property and, and owning the property. And in this case, with multifamily development, the school district estimated sixteen students who would also be eligible for transportation, and those would go to Chavez, Waldo, and McKay schools. And again, this is voter-exempt because it is an application by the property owners, and council has the authority to approve the annexation and also adopt, modify, or reject the planning commission's recommendation on the land use designations. And staff's recommendation is to adopt the order. And that concludes my presentation. Of course, I'm available for questions.
Aye, very good. Thank you. Uh, there's no members of the public signed up, so do you have any questions, any of you, for Pamela? No? Okay. And I'm going to close the public hearing. Counselor Gonzalez, do you want to make a motion on this?
Yeah. Yes, sir. Thank you. I move staff recommendation to adopt order number 2021 dash five.
Second.
Second by Hoy. Any discussion? Okay, with the recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike is absent. Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. And we'll move on to our final public hearing for the evening, 21 518, which is an adoption of ward boundaries. Amy, do you want to take us into this one?
Sure will, Mayor. The City Council will now hold a public hearing regarding new cou- City Council Ward reapportionment. The hearing will be conducted with the staff presentation, um, and no individuals are signed up to speak.
Thank you. Okay, and the staff will be? Lisa, okay, very good.
Hi there, uh, Mayor and Council Lisa Anderson Ogilvy, your planning administrator. Um, just like last time, I have Leslie Hegewold from the Council of Governments, and she's going to give a brief presentation um, for you tonight on the ward reapportionment.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Uh, thanks for, thank you for having me back to talk about redistricting. Um, I just have a brief PowerPoint presentation that we'll go through. And then I can take any questions, so please bear with me while I share my screen and start my presentation. Um, can you see that okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Um, okay, so my name is Leslie Hegewold. I'm the GIS Coordinator with the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments, and I have been contracted to provide redistricting services for the City Council wards again. Um, redistricting is necessary every ten years following each decennial census to rebalance the population of the representative areas to ensure, um, equal representation. And, um, we have a little bit less time to do this due to the delays in the census, so this has been on a very short schedule. So, the process is driven by two things, uh, the first being the data, which comes from the Census Bureau. Um, it's a limited, uh, data release from the Decennial 2020 Census. Um, just with a few different, uh, attributes there, and the data is tabulated at the census block level, which is the smallest level of geography for which the data is tabulated. Uh, the second thing is the criteria, which is, um, directed to us by the Secretary of State um, in a directive that was issued in September. Um, and that lists the rules that we need to follow, um, when defining the new boundaries. Um, for the equal population requirement, we stay, try to stay within five percent plus or minus of the target population, since it's very difficult to get it exactly on point. Um, some additional considerations were developed through interviews with council members, um, and those include following neighborhood association boundaries wherever possible, minimizing the number of small sections of neighborhood associations in each ward, using natural boundaries, and some additional suggestions that came from the council on specific local areas. So the first, uh, step is to analyze the current ward boundaries, and, um, you can see in the map, the percentages are the deviations from the target population. And since we're trying to stay within five percent, you can see that, um, wards eight and four are over the required population. Wards six and two are quite significantly under. Um, Ward five is a little bit under, five and seven are okay, and three. Um, but when you start shifting population around, you usually have to affect the adjacent wards. Three, three alternatives were developed. Uh, the first alternative was, um, minimal change from the current boundaries, and so this one was done to just get the wards into alignment, um, with the population within that five percent with as minimal change as possible to the current boundaries. Um, alternative two was, um, taking that minimal change option and then trying to better align it with neighborhood association boundaries. And alternative three, um, took that alternative and then tried to accommodate, uh, future growth in the outer wards. Um, so alternative one, um, just gets the numbers within the five percent with as minimal change as possible. We had to bring more of Ward one into West Salem, um, to compensate for that high population growth that Ward eight had. Um, there are a few other areas of, uh, change, but this is the minimal change, um, to the current boundaries. Alternative two, um, tries to better align with neighborhood association boundaries. Um, we've taken Ward one a little bit farther into West Salem. Minto Brown Island Park has been put into Ward one. And in this option also, um, the area that is north of Highway 22 and east of I-5 has been, um, moved from Ward three to Ward two. Um, and then there are a few other minor changes as well. Alternative three, um, takes a bit different approach to bringing more of Ward one into West Salem, um, going a little further to the north. Um, the area, uh, north of Highway 22 and east of I-5 has also been moved from three into two in this option. We did a race and ethnic analysis using the census data, um, to comply with the Secretary of State's directive, um, looking at the data and how it's distributed across the city. Citywide, uh, non-white and Hispanic people comprise thirty-six percent of the population. You can see that, um, the highest concentrations of non-white and Hispanic people are in East Salem. The darker colors represent higher numbers. This is the current wards. Alternative one is the least amount of change. There's really not a big difference from the current ward boundaries and this alternative. Alternative two, um, since we are moving this area, um, that's north of 22 from Ward three into Ward two, um, there is some impact there because of the high concentration of non-white and Hispanic people there. And the same, um, thing applies with, uh, alternative three as well, since it's the same movement. Um, the results of the race and da- ethnic data analysis is that there's little to no impact in alternative one. In alternatives two and three, Ward three becomes slightly less diverse, but, um, wards two, five, and six remain above the city average for non-white and Hispanic population. Um, so the timeline, as I mentioned, has been very tight this time. Um, where we are today is that we're looking at February 7th is the last day that county clerks can revise their voter precincts in time for the, uh, May primary election. And, um, they have a tremendous amount of work that they have to do before that point. Um, and so the time is again very tight. Um, candidate filings are in March, so. Um, that is the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions, if anyone has any.
Counselor Hoy?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a question. I have more of a comment, and I just wanted to thank staff, um, Ms. Hegewold and, and Ms. Ogil- Anderson Ogilvy. I think, uh, the process that was conducted or that is being conducted by the city is, uh, uh, in sharp contrast, uh, to what we've seen on the state and national level, and I appreciate it very much. It's a, it's a very much data-driven. It's not a political process, and I just, uh, want to commend them for that fine work. I'm really happy with the choices we have before us, and I'm sure that we'll reach, uh, a consensus tonight on one of them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, Tom, I'm sorry. I'm getting used to the little hands up in the corner. I'm not, I'm used to watching for movement, so.
Well, I just pressed lower hand, so that's.
There we go. Thank you.
Um, I have a question, and it may be more for, um, uh, Lisa Anderson Ogilvy. One of the criterias, a criteria was, uh, neighborhood groups. And, uh, speaking for Ward two, right now, I've got six neighborhood groups, and I presume other wards have, have, uh, close to that, but I think six is the maximum. And as I'm looking at alternatives two and three, I'm pretty sure that removes Nen and Morningside from Ward two, and I will tell you that five percent of Nen, or five to ten percent of Nen, and five to ten percent of Morningside are, are, uh, in Ward two. The vast majority is in Ward one and Ward three. So am I correct in thinking that that would reduce the, um, uh, number of wards and, uh, a number of, uh, neighborhood groups in Ward two?
Um, and alternative two, I believe it would. Alternative three, you would pick up, um, Swan, and you would, and you would still have a little bit of Nen, so you'd actually increase your neighborhood.
Well, that's good. Okay.
Yeah, it's very difficult. The neighborhood boundaries don't necessarily align even with census blocks, so it's very difficult, um, for us to match up all the wards with the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I have a kind of a historical question, Lisa. Um, I understand correctly, it was ten years ago that, uh, Ward one, um, infiltrated into Ward eight. Sorry, my words. And I'm curious, what was the philosophy? What was the, the criteria ten years ago? Why? Why was that part of West Salem, uh, turned into Ward one?
Sure, and, uh, Leslie worked on the project ten years ago, so she might have more, um, history than I do, but, uh, West Salem's just been, been growing. Um, it, it hasn't been its own ward for that long before that Ward eight actually went into downtown, because, uh, West Salem was, wasn't so populous, and then when it got to be so large, it's just, it's just too big to be its own ward. So, we got quite a few comments about that being people's preference for this time around, but, you know, Leslie looked at that, and I think it would be thirty, thirty-five percent over the target population, um, if it was its own ward. So it's just not possible to do that with West Salem.
Yeah, and, and actually, and maybe it's a question for Leslie, since she was involved ten years ago. What was the thinking of that part of Ward eight that was put into Ward one? What was, uh, what was the thinking? What was the reasoning? Or was it a dark ward?
Um, so, yes, so we only had West Salem be its own ward for ten years. I also did the redistricting in 2001, so this is the third time I've done this. Um, so it was necessary last time and ten years ago to bring Ward one into, uh, West Salem, just because it had grown too much. And we were limited to bringing Ward one in. We couldn't bring any of the other wards in because one of the Secretary of State's criteria is that there have to be transportation links. So that's where the bridges are, is between Ward one and Ward eight. Um, we conducted interviews with the council members at that time as well, and, um, the feedback was that, um, they preferred for, um, the area to encompass, um, kind of that Edgewater, um, district area. And so that's how that happened ten years ago.
I was the counselor at that time for Ward one, and, and that's exactly, I was asked, and that made the most sense to me, I think. And I think Clem was, uh, Ward eight.
Yes.
Clem. And I think it was just sort of what made any kind of sense, and that really, this, this configuration is what worked. Okay.
Yeah, and the other thing is that the block geography that we have to work with is, um, is very interesting in some places, especially in West Salem, where a lot of the, you know, it's very hilly, and there's roads that kind of wind around, and so you don't really get nice, neat, um, boundaries in some of the areas of West Salem, so we tried as best we could to make boundaries that made sense as well.
Okay, yes, Virginia?
I guess I'll just add to this, since, um, this is my ward. Um, I really, uh, enjoy the part, um, that, um, is West Salem, my ward. I love that it does cross the river. It makes West Salem less of an island to me. Um, it kind of seems like it, it nits it back into the, into the city of Salem in a way, um, that maybe the river just divides us a little bit, and so having Ward one be on both sides of the river, to me, really, um, helps, uh, make us a cohesive, um, city, and, and having two representatives, uh, for West Salem is also good. Um, they have a unique, um, situation, and, uh, so I really enjoy, uh, being on both sides of the river. I think it's really important for our city. Um, and again, I love all three of these options. There's, uh, one of them where I'm taking over, uh, Minto Brown Park, and I thought, jeez, that's a, that's amazing. Um, uh, but all, all three of these are amazing options, of course. Um, I really am always forward-looking, and so looking for future growth is always really important to me and, and important to keep in mind, so. Um, those are some of my thoughts on tonight. Thanks again to staff for all their work.
Counselor Hoy?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just for the record, we do have the same phenomenon over here in East Salem. My ward spans both sides of the Little Pudding, the, the Little Pudding River, so FYI. It's just a little smaller. A lot smaller.
That's, that's really true. What else? Who else has? Who's the one that's divided by any other creeks they want to?
Mill Creek, Mill Creek.
There it is, okay. And thank you for taking both sides of Mill Creek, Counselor, for all these years. Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else? Counselor Hoy, do you have a motion?
I do. Uh, I move.
Public hearing, we'll go ahead then. Go ahead.
Thank you. I move City Council adopt alternative number three.
Second.
Second by Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I looked at all these options. I could, frankly, I could live with any one of them. I think they're all fine options. They, they, um, they meet our needs in an apolitical way, and I think that's the appropriate thing to do. I think that what I find most attractive about option number three is that, uh, it plans for future growth, and, uh, I think that's the appropriate thing to do here when we have the opportunity, and, uh, number three's the one that does that. I think it's the best option.
Anyone else? Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I, um, to be honest, uh, visually, option three would work for me. I, I believe it's, it would be, would be great to have Ward one be on both sides of the, of the river. But the thing that's truly missing in option three, as far as I'm concerned, is a bridge on the north end. And without that bridge, um, I'm in more in favor of option one, which is clearly the least disruptive, not only to Ward eight, it's cur- clearly the least disruptive to Ward eight, but if the staff is correct, it's the least disruptive to all of the wards, and so I would be more in favor of option one.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Leung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually in favor of option three. To me, that one makes sense, and I'm echoing whatsoever the other counselors said. It allows for growth while also maintaining the balance that we're going to see in the next ten years.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr.
Oh, there it is.
Um, uh, uh, I just point out, I'm in favor of, uh, uh, alternative three, and my second would be alternative two, but either alternative really makes Ward two the most attenuated one. If you look at it, it crosses, uh, you know, the part that uh, you know, the part that's east of Lancaster and north of of the Saniam Highway. That's that's connected by a mighty thin read to the rest of the ward. But I really don't object so much to that because it does increase the the proportion of the different uh, the the ethnic and racial groups that are in the ward. So, I think that's on balance, that's a good thing to distribute more within the wards.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, um, one one question or one comment about the the growth. It is absolutely true that in the last 10 years, the growth has been substantial in in both West and and South Salem. But we're reaching a point now where the land that's available in West Salem is is in the far northwest corner up in the hills where you're going to be finding that the houses are going to start at $500,000. Um, I'm not much of a predictor, but I have been in the real estate business, related business for over 35 years and it is my sense that the West Salem area is going to slow down now as a practical matter. The other thing I wanted to comment on is I I don't know if we've taken into consideration our Salem. I I thought it was our goal not to have the status quo be uh, the rule of the day, but to start working on infill, which would increase the population of the wards of one, two, three. And so, um, I again, I have concerns about option three and I'm in favor of option one.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Okay, why don't we have the recorder then call the roll on option three?
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike is absent. Counselor Lewis?
No.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We'll move on then to special orders of business. Uh, we'll begin five A is the police report. Chief Womack?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Councillors. Thank you for your time tonight. Thanks for this opportunity. Give me just a moment here to share my screen. There we go. Is that showing up?
Yeah.
Excellent, okay. Okay, again, thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update, uh, two specific areas for the Police Department tonight, talking about our our trust building efforts, which are well underway, and also a recent staffing analysis that was completed. So, as you all know, I've been talking about it a lot since I arrived. We're working hard to develop a deeper connection with our residents, with our community members here. And as part of my plan for the first year, I've talked about this also, just investing a lot of my own time and getting to know the community better. And I've literally met with hundreds of people over the past 12 months. Um, those have been very valuable meetings and we've received a lot of positive feedback along the way too that's been helpful. Um, but that's just the beginning. That's just the beginning. We have so much more work to do. And that's what I want to talk about tonight. And so, but what are we after when I talk about this trust building work, that this path that we're on as an agency? What are the, what's the goal here? And there's there's two primary goals that are related. We want to improve community safety and while simultaneously building, maintaining trust with our community. So, the work that I'm talking about here has real practical benefits, but it's really about trust building with our community and improving safety at the same time. So, we spent some time designing that work out. Um, and we're not just making it up ourselves. We're drawing upon available research and best practice, things that have worked in other parts of the country and other cities. And we know that if your goal, there's a growing body of research now that shows if your goal is police legitimacy, increased legitimacy, increased trust, then a proven means to that end is procedural justice. And so, the foundational components of our trust building work are all around procedural justice. And the four tenants there are voice, want to make sure everyone feels that they have a voice with their police department, that they're heard, uh, that we treat everyone with dignity and respect in all circumstances and situations. Neutrality there, we want to make sure we're fair and neutral in our decision-making processes, both as an organization and also as individual police officers and staff members. And trustworthiness, we want to make sure we're acting in trustworthy ways, for example, following through on our word, um, acting with the best of intentions. And so, with that in mind as the foundation for our trust building plan, we designed a trust building pan, plan for the department. There's four main components. This is in place now. It's on our website. So, if anybody wants to read more detail about it, they can see it there on the website. But just to quickly overview those four components, first of all, it all starts with listening. That's the first step of the process. Um, I mentioned earlier all the meetings that I had and the relationships that we've been building as a department. Along the way, I began to make some connections and with folks and invite them into the creation of a new Advisory Council, an Advisory Council to the chief. So, there's about 15 members now that of Council, just an informal committee that serves as a direct community voice for me as the police chief here in Salem. They've also been helping me with this idea of listening. And so, they helped, they helped to kick off the first set of listening sessions that we held. Very small group structured listening sessions with a diverse segment of our community, diversity of perspective and lived experiences um, for me to hear directly from our community about their perspectives on policing, their past experiences with policing and where they see policing going in the future. So, we've done some very intentional directed listening sessions so far in October. We're going to do a few more of those by year's end. But the idea here is to expand this out in early 22 and offered for more more interactions with the community at large. But that work's already well underway. What's the purpose behind all of that? It's to gather community inputs that we can inform our policy, practice and training. So, we're going to take what we learn from the listening sessions and we're going to apply that and infuse that into our policy and practice and training as an organization, begin to shift the direction and culture of the organization and make us a truly community-informed police department. At the same time, while there's that sort of community, external focus, trust-building work going on, there's a lot of internal foundational work happening as well. As an example, uh, we're going to be providing procedural justice training for all of our officers. We brought in a a nationally-recognized trainer who teaches this to agencies all over the country. And did a train the trainer course for our own staff. So, we developed a cadre of in-house procedural justice trainers. And they've taken that um, that standard curriculum and they've worked to tailor it for our department. And so, I'm excited to say that we're going to kick that training off in January and through January and March, we'll be training all of our staff on this found, on these foundational concepts of procedural justice. Finally, in the end, this goes back to that goal that I mentioned in the beginning. All this work that we're doing comes together um, around this policing philosophy that I've, this philosophy that I've been talking about, principled policing and smarter policing. This work combines around increased safety and improved trust, those two goals that I mentioned earlier. So, our profession in general is shifting and changing. We're evolving and adapting. There's a paradigm shift in policing happening and we're committed to be at the forefront of that here in Salem. We're going to be on the leading edge. But the shifting is probably a good segue into the next topic. Let's talk about uh, some some staffing analysis that's been done. And I have a few concerns there because I think that there could be some some impediments to the trust building work we want to do because of the capacity limitations of the organization. So, just as a reminder, uh, where where we've been so far, uh, there was a community policing audit or engagement assessment underway before I arrived. We saw the results of that, I believe, in in April, was presented to Council. We've worked to conduct our own internal assessment too. Uh, my management team and I have worked to assess the organization. And then most recently in October, received a more in-depth staffing analysis or study that was a branch off of the original community policing audit. And that's what I want to overview tonight for the Council. So, that was a much more in-depth workload analysis. Uh, the methodology is is even discussed in the report um, that it's it's not useful to use simple, simple ratios, for example, number of officers per population. That doesn't mean very much. And so, the preferred methodology is to do a deep in-depth workload analysis. And that was the methodology approach taken here with this analysis. It took a look at all areas of the department, all divisions, patrol, investigations and support. Uh, but there was definitely a concentrated focus on patrol where the where the need is most acute. Quick overview of some of their findings. So, they made a recommendation that we enhance our online record services to get some efficiency there for our non-sworn record staff. They identified a capacity was lacking for the collection, processing, uh, management of digital evidence. We know the ubiquitous nature of cell phones and video now that the there's always an increasing demand for video evidence now and we need to keep up with that increasing demand. Also, they noted that violent crime in our city exceeds the level of our current violent crime investigative unit. So, in short, we just need more detectives. They called out that we've done a good job of trying to find alternatives to in-person call response and we should do more of that, for example, finding other ways to reduce responses to burglary alarms or um, finding ways to direct victims to more online reporting systems instead of sending officers. They recommended we expand our community service officer program, which is are the non-sworn staff in uniform that can handle lower-level investigations and responses that don't require a police officer. I wholeheartedly support that recommendation also. They also took, made some uh, organizational structural recommendations, change recommendations for the department, such as phasing out the corporal rank as the prevailing belief in the industry is that supervision should remain up at the sergeant level. Again, I support that recommendation also. Some of the work's already begun around making that change. More specific to patrol, uh, they confirmed for us that patrol is understaffed to meet demands and it's at the point where it's having pretty significant impacts internally and externally for the department. So, internally, an example would be our ability to to train our own personnel. Uh, to in order to maintain staffing on patrol, it becomes extremely difficult to pull people away for training. And so, that's a challenge internally. And then externally, it hampers our ability to do relationship building and community policing type work. They did identify potential efficiency changes we could make on patrol with our shift structures and scheduling. So, as an example there, we'd be moving from a 10-hour shift structure to a 12-hour shift structure and noted that that could squeeze 15 to 20% more efficiency out of our personnel resources on patrol. But importantly, they noticed, and that's no easy task, shifting from uh, one patrol shift structure to another, take a lot of time, effort and planning. But even if we went through that process and made the change, we would still need uh, 27 to 83 more officers on patrol, just the patrol division alone, not the rest of the department. So, that's it. Assessments are done. We spent a year assessing things, right? We've done a lot of analysis. But we we know the state of the organization. We know what our needs are. Let's start looking to the future. Let's start reimagining what policing in Salem could look like if we were adequately adequately staffed. So, we need to create a community policing model or a community engagement model for this city. It was called out in the in the community engagement audit. And for the foundational step there for us is a redistricting effort, moving from policing from 11 current policing districts, which is a lot, um, down to something like four or five. This is just a quick example we created. This isn't what the redistricting would actually look like. Um, but just to provide an example of how the city could be redistrict and the workload distributed evenly between districts. This is a major effort to undertake. This could take a year or more just to redistrict in this way. Um, and so, that work needs to begin next year. I also recognize, we recognize as a department, the the staffing numbers that we're talking about, adding um, significant numbers of police officers and other staff. This won't happen overnight. This isn't something that can be fixed overnight. And so, we need to be thinking about this strategically over a period of time and years. And so, how do we prioritize some of that work? For me and us, step one would be that organizational structure change that needs to happen. Work is, work and time has already been invested in moving this change forward. Uh, this will require the addition of six officers to the department in order to effectuate this change. That's a a step that we need to stay focused on and more in the short term. Farther out, projecting farther out. We need to realize that community policing model that we're creating by redistricting. So, we need to flesh out those new policing district with a community engagement model. Can you imagine if we took a police sergeant for each of these five districts, for example, as a district commander? Um, backed up by a a team of officers of five or six, so perhaps 35 additional staff here to flesh out this community policing model. And finally, we need to make sure the rest of the department is adequately resourced as well. Make sure patrol has the resources they need to respond to emergencies. Make sure we have enough detectives to investigate our cases and solve crimes. Make sure there's support resources, resources there to back up all of that work, like hiring, training and equipping officers. That's how we're thinking about this more in in a phase or steps approach. So, we're reimagining policing for Salem. We're thinking about the future now. I I touched on tonight, our trust building work, the design work that we did and how we we started that work now and it's it's moving ahead, full speed ahead. Talked about uh, the staffing analysis that we've completed and and have the concerns that I have, how that might slow some of this work down or be an impediment. Uh, but more importantly, we're beginning to cast a vision for the future, for what policing will look like in Salem. I'm excited about that. I hope you are too. As as a practical example that folks may be able to relate to, if you could imagine taking our downtown enforcement team, the officers on bicycles that everybody sees roaming around downtown. If you could take that sergeant and those officers and replicate them across the city in all the new policing districts and free them up from emergency call response, just imagine how responsive we could be to community needs, things we hear from neighborhood associations or things like um, speeding and the traffic concerns or that I hear regularly and you hear too, the business community, the needs of the business community, quality of life issues, spending time developing relationships and in partnership with our community for problem solving. Some of these pictures, as they show, going door-to-door with crime safety information or following up after a protest, interacting with the community or following up after a shooting occurred, spending time with our community, doing community policing. And frankly, this this actually is what I've been hearing from the community as well. This is what our community wants from their police department and this is what they expect from their police department. So, I'm excited about this and with that, I'm also happy to take any questions.
Hey, thank you very much, Chief. That was uh, that was really good, really found that interesting. Uh, are there any questions, comments, thoughts on this? Uh, Chief, are we going to see this then? Uh, the phasing in of this, which I I I, as I kind of hear it, we're talking five to 10 years. If I if I get a real sense of what the timeline might look like, will we start seeing action on this at this budget, in this budget cycle? Do you know how how you will be recommending or how that will be coming forward?
I think for for me, the would be focused on that step one that I mentioned.
Five or six officers is that?
To in order to to phase out that corporal rank. I think that's a critical first step.
Okay. And is that a bargainable? How does that work with your with your union? What?
I've already been, uh, this, this is a need that I identified when I arrived too.
Yeah.
And so, I've already laid a lot of groundwork there. It is an item that we've met with the union about and discussed already.
Does that mean it's it's all set to go or does that mean you discussed it?
Yes. Yes, I've laid the groundwork there. I think uh, I think that uh, we have a plan in place to to make that work.
Okay. Very good. Anyone else have any? So, yes, thank you, Counselor Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Uh, I appreciate the the in-depth look you're taking at the department. It's something you told us you were going to do a year ago. It's something that uh, we talked about frankly in your interview process and you followed through with that. I really appreciate it. I think this has been a really thoughtful look. I look forward to sitting down with you and and really getting a better understanding of of exactly what what we're talking about. I think that the, you know, rethinking the patrol districts that you and I have talked about in the past. I think that's a, I think that's a great idea. Flattening the organization by eliminating the corporal rank, I think is is a really good uh, step forward. So, I I look forward to working with you on this and now trying to figure out a way to implement what we can.
Yeah, I I I will tell you, Chief, that this discussion of flattening the organization, I know goes back for many years, discussion of kind of do, are there too many supervisors for the number of uh, folks being supervised? So, it's really interesting to hear how you've analyzed that at this point. I uh, I can recall it about uh, gosh, about 15, 20 years ago, being talked about with one of the former chiefs. Uh, kind of how do you, you're just looking at that idea and I'm happy to hear it uh, at least coming forward now as a stronger discussion item. Anyone else?
Looks like we have two more hands up, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Sora saying.
Oh, there they are. God, I'm sorry, you guys. I I'm just still not used to those little hands there. Just people waving at me. So, Evan, go ahead. Just people waving at me. So, uh, Evan, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, Chief Womack, um, my question's around response times, and I know, and I don't want you to document like response times to like crimes for obvious reasons. But I would assume that in different parts of our community, response time, uh, differs. And, uh, one of the things I've heard a lot from community members is some confusion around why do we not have, why did we opt for a giant police station instead of smaller ones in different parts of the town? And when we're, um, communicating and talking about a new strategy, it is, are we kind of focusing on how we are communicating to members of the public around those kind of decisions? Because I know in Ward Seven, where I live, um, it's not one of those places where you often see an officer from my perspective compared to some other parts of town. And, um, our concerns are more quality life of i- issues than other parts of town, um, when you're t- talking about concerns of like shootings and violent crimes. But, um, you know, uh, we, you know, I hear from my neighbors all the time about a concern around like, um, mail being mail theft. I know that that's a problem in West Salem too. So, um, are we like, when we're talking about flattening and increasing patrols, what does that look like around? How do you decide if a cop's gonna be in South Salem versus West Salem versus East Salem? And how does that kind of go into like the decision of when we're expanding our department, where do these patrols go kind of deal? Sorry, there's a lot there.
Oh, yes, that's okay. Thanks for the questions. Uh, currently, based on staffing limitations that we have, we have to be kind of driven by call response and where the need is and prioritizing things as well. So, um, so for example, if there's violent crime happening, that's gonna be a higher priority than other crimes. That's where we're gonna be drawn to. Um, and it, it's unfortunate because it's a lack of service for other areas that need that service as well. So we're already at the point where we're, we're basically just in response to calls and prioritizing calls as far as where we go. The idea that we're projecting here with the additional resources would actually allow um, us to partner with the community on some of those other quality of life issues and have it be informed by the community. So we could have regular attendance and relationship building with community members to understand their concerns. Not just call data or crime data, but, but understand from the community what they would like us to do, and we'd have the time. The unobligated patrol time, we've heard that term in some of these assessments. We'd have that unobligated patrol time in order to work on those problems with the community. And if it was distributed through all the new districts, then you would have that responsiveness within your own area. Um, and have it not pulled to another area where there might be higher priority incidents happening.
Chief, do you wanna comment just briefly on, uh, precincts? I, I think that was one of, uh, uh, that's often a question that's asked, I think, by folks who've not had a chance to hear the discussion of putting a, a precinct in various parts of town.
And then there's, there's pros and cons both ways there. First of all, there's a huge cost issue with every facility, right? So, um, on top of staffing, you have the facility costs for each new building that you create. Um, and then you're decentralizing versus centralized, and that's the idea there. We're not, policing is a little bit different than, than we don't just get in our car from the police station and go handle a call and come back. You know, it's, it's our response time isn't time, isn't tied to the location of your building. We're already distributed throughout the city and the, the office is their car. Um, and so response time is more, do you have enough officers deployed out into the areas rather than the locations of your facilities? Hopefully that makes sense. So it's not necessarily connected to response times as far as the location of facilities. I know folks do like to have the presence of a police facility in their area, and so there's a benefit there. But it's, uh, not, doesn't necessarily affect response times.
Thank you. Jose?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief. I, um, wanted to thank, uh, take this moment to thank the chief. You know, he's taken the time to visit with me. A lot of small businesses in Northeast Salem, a lot of community members, just taking the time to tour the area and visit with, uh, Councilor Hoy and I when some of the things got pretty hot here during the summer. So just wanted to publicly thank you. And one thing I didn't hear today, but I know going forward it'll be there, but I'm looking forward to working with you to be able to pull future officers from our neighborhoods. You know, so that's what I'm looking forward to. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Uh, Trevor?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mayor Bennett, and thank you, Chief Womack, uh, for the outstanding presentation tonight. Um, I, I really also wanna thank you for the work you put in, um, in terms of, you know, being new to our community and just hitting the ground running. Um, I think that, uh, it's imperative that, you know, you, you talked about being at the forefront of the paradigm shift that's, that's happening in policing. Um, I think what comes next is, is gonna be difficult for those of us on the Budget Committee and the Finance Committee, which is to find the dollars to get the additional policing that the data shows we need. Um, I mean, I think there's been some disagreement on the data. We may not be able to afford sixty new officers. But I, I don't think we can afford the status quo. So I am in support of, you know, adding additional officers as is needed. And I think that, you know, leading with the transition towards community, you know, led policing is, is just imperative. And I, I, I couldn't imagine someone to make our difficult job of finding those additional dollars easier than yourself, uh, Chief Womack and the efforts you put in in this first, you know, year and a half. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, Chief. Uh, we look forward to taking a deep dive into this and really seeing how this is presented to us, I think, as we approach the the budget part of this, which becomes probably the most difficult part, is how do we, how do we really look at allocation of resources to meet the uh, the needs of the community as opposed to maybe some other things that are going on out there? So I, I think it'll be real interesting to have that discussion. Okay. We will move on then to, just one second here, uh, three point two A, Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that council adopt the staff recommendations uh, concerning Resolution Number Twenty Twenty One dash forty six and the attended direction to the staff to take appropriate measures to discuss this with other taxing districts in the area.
Second.
Second. Second by Stapleton. Counselor?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm excited about this. Uh, we are bringing, uh, according to the gentleman who spoke with us, nearly two hundred adults downtown in an area that there was nothing going for. Once Nordstrom left it, it's just a big nothing in the middle of the city. And I, I look at the, there's this, oh, it's maybe, I don't know exactly, but it's probably the corner south of it there. There is still a big hole in the ground where the bank used to be. And so, uh, and you know, there's been several attempts to do something there, and none of them worked out. And this one seems like it will be working out. Um, you know, one of the ways we keep our downtown viable is to have people there twenty-four, seven. And that's what this will do. So I think this is a excellent use of the, uh, multiple unit housing tax incentive program. And I note that, uh, in the, oh, I don't know, there's been nine in like forty-six years that we've approved. So this is a good one, and, uh, I'm all in favor of.
Great. Yeah, uh, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I also support this project. I think it's exactly the kind of thing that we ought to be using, uh, our Mootip for as, uh, just to kind of put it in our, through the framework that I've been talking about lately in terms of preventing, managing and ending homelessness. Even though you might not think of that as part of this, this is a prevention tool. So the, the more we can increase our housing inventory, uh, because it is such a, it's so tight, the more we can increase it at all levels of the, of the, uh, market. Uh, the, the more likely we are to prevent homelessness in the future, as we have more places, uh, for people, more options for people to reside. And so I think this is exactly the kind of program that we ought to be using, our very precious tool, the Mootip, uh, uh, where we can provide tax exemption. So I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Gonzalez?
Also wanna thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to, uh, express my support. And, you know, I work in, my day job is housing, sales, rentals. And you, you won't believe the amount of calls we get when we ha- offer a one bedroom. And so it's really been really, it's really great that this has a majority studio and one bedrooms. But I kid you not, we have to take down our ads within a few days because of the amount of calls, emails, text messages, Facebook messages that we get. You, you won't believe it, thirty to fifty in a day or two. It's just, it's crazy. And the stories of these peoples, it's really hard. They're, um, in a hotel room, paying double what they should be paying. They're living in their cars, they're just couch surfing. So these kind of units are exactly what the city needs. Thank you.
Counselor Stapleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I wanted to express my, um, excitement for this project and support for the project. Um, like Counselor Gonzalez was saying, all the difference, um, the smaller units. I know we've seen a lot of luxury things going in over the years downtown and, and I, I know I've seen pictures, drafts of these plans uh, for this unit, and they're gonna be beautiful. But I love that they're just this different entry point level, and the different size is so important. Um, and I am so excited about the rooftop garden. I hope I get a tour at some point in time.
That's great. Yeah, I wanna, I wanna express my really strong support for this too. I was, uh, uh, really here fif- almost fifty years ago now, when the downtown was redeveloped to the configuration that is now being redeveloped again. Uh, and I think it's probably kinds of a cycle. Uh, people in the future will take a look at it and talk about it and do a different way. What's exciting is seeing the downtown evolving again to a kind of more uh, much like it was before, the current configuration was sort of a mixed, a mixed housing, mixed small business, large business, uh, uh, area. We lost a great deal of housing during urban renewal and seeing it coming back uh, to me is extremely encouraging. Uh, there were, there were pensioner hotels, there were second story apartments. There was a whole bunch of stuff going on back then that we lost in the, in the redevelopment. And it made sense at the time. It really had a, a good solid, it had a good run. But it's, it's really neat to see it looking again at the kind of more concentrated mix of housing, small business, a couple of big box stores. But, uh, this is, I think this is just a great redevelopment approach that's going on. And what's exciting about it to me too is we're not the ones absolutely defining it and driving it. This is also market driven. We're also have people who are investing and making some really interesting market decisions. They're telling us a lot about where our town's headed and where our downtown's headed. So I think it's, it's really, uh, really a very exciting time. And, uh, this is just a, one more good tool being used, I think, in this case. It also is adding really substantial amount of housing, as Counselor Hoy pointed out. This, the more housing we add, the better the housing environment is for everybody. And, uh, I, I think that's, uh, really important, uh. And I know there are those who are kind of concerned at various times. Well, it's sort of government putting its, you know, hand on the scales, but, uh, this is exactly the kind of thing we can do uh, that really creates the opportunity to have this kind of high quality development. I, I'm really excited. I, the one that's, the next one to me is gonna be what happens at UGM? At that old UGM site when that's cleared and we really start looking at affordable housing in the core area. What, what will happen there? How will that, how will that occur? So, anyway, I, uh, I think this is a, this is a winner. This is a good one. Thank you, Counselor Hoy, for moving this forward. Okay, anyone else? Go ahead and vote on this. Call roll.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike is absent. Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Maker of the motion votes aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Sorry, Anderson, I, I had, I had Hoy, I'm looking at Hoy's the next guy up.
Well, and Hoy's really, his comments were great about the three prong on, on homeless.
Yeah, well.
Okay.
Well, I, that, I really agree. I, I apologize though. Thank you for making that motion. Okay, Counselor Hoy, three point two B. Now is your chance.
Thank you, my moment to shine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to deny the application of same act LLC for tax, tax exemption under the city's Mootip and direct staff to bring back a resolution for final action consistent with this motion.
Second.
Second by Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as excited I was for the last one, I, I'm just not about this one. And, um, SRC two point eight two five states, city council may approve an application. If the public benefit the property will receive under the program is reasonable when considered in combination with other public benefits is receiving or for which the owner plans to apply. In this case, the benefit of a tax exemption for the project, which exemption is for a minimum of ten years and could be extended for additional ten years, is unreasonable, given that only two units of housing are proposed in this project. It does not substantially further the goal of the program to stimulate the addition of multiple family housing in the city's core area. Further, it's apparent, uh, the tax exemption in this case is not serving to stimulate the project, given that the applicant is seeking the exemption after project funding has been obtained and construction is substantially underway. And therefore, the purpose of the program, uh, purposes of the program are not served by granting an exemption in this case.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Kristen, did you have something you wanted to say? I saw you light up, so I was just checking.
Oh, I actually saw Counselor Stapleton starting to raise her hand.
Did she have her hand up? Okay. Go ahead, Virginia.
Thank you. Um, so this is a hard one for me, uh, because, uh, much like what Counselor Hoy just said, right? Um, you know, you wanna, you wanna move, sorry, my thoughts aren't super perfect here, so I'm just gonna talk and sort it out as we go. Um, we wanna see more housing, not just two units. Um, we want this to be an incentive, not something that somebody comes for later. Um, and I understand all of that. Um, this is one of the reasons why I had a hard time approving the one on Broadway. Is that they came to us, I think they were like ninety percent complete. I mean, I had a hard time with that one. Um, one of the things that's kind of sticking with me though is that I don't want this to be an incentive only for big developers. And I feel like, say, somebody like me might come into some money, might be able to take on a small project that just has a couple of units. But I'm not a huge entity, um, and therefore I would never be able to take on something like the Nordstrom's building. And I don't want this program to become something that is only for people who are big developers that are coming in and doing these huge projects, um, which I love. Voted for the last one. Um, but I also want to invest in, in folks who are, who are living here and are a part of this community and wanna take on these small projects that we also need. So I'm struggling. I, I am in total agreement that the ten year thing is, is too long for something like this. That just, I can't find the balance there. Um, I was looking at, I asked, um, Director Rutherford for some numbers and just looking at what the tax breaks would be over the ten years. And, um, you know, per unit for the Nordstrom's, uh, remodel, uh, each unit would be five thousand, a little over five thousand. Um, and the other would be over twelve thousand or right at twelve thousand. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to find balance. If any of you guys have more to say about this, um, I'm, I really would like to hear from others.
Counselor Leung has her hand up.
Okay, Counselor Leung?
Thank you. I, I know it's getting late and it's probably hard to see, um, some, sometimes when people are raising their hands. So, um, I kind of have to echo, um, Counselor Stapleton in that I'm struggling with this as well. I mean, at the same time, I recognize that we do need more housing, um, but at the, and without penalizing the smaller individuals or developers who wanna be able to have a start. Um, but I also agree with like how far they are with their build. Like if they had come in earlier, I might have been maybe leaning more towards yes. But I'm right now kind of more on the fence, leaning more on the no side at this moment. And, and like Counselor Stapleton, I'd like to hear from other folks in, in terms of where they stand on this particular, um, build.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Gonzalez?
You know, I, um, I'm not so concerned about where it comes into the, where the money would come into this project. I support what the staff has done. They're the ones that are doing that. But I can tell you that I've I've walked past this building like probably over a year now, at least a few times a week. In this section, it's a cool, it's it's really nice what they did in that alley. An alley that's needed some facing housing facing into the alley. There could there couldn't be possible, there really couldn't be any more housing. And what they did to this building was really was really interesting. I was really shocked that they could even fit those units there. And yeah, more people downtown. And yeah, I agree with Counselor Stapleton about this supporting developers at all levels. To me, I'd like to see this passed. So I'll be voting against the motion. Denying it.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you, everybody so far. This is this is good. Director Rutherford, is there anything in my perfect world that would have? You know, you know, we we have this program and it really is, I, you know, the more that I'm experiencing it, the more I'm realizing it really is geared towards larger developments. Is there anything in our toolbox that can help smaller developers through a different program that we could maybe set up? I'm dreaming here. I'm sorry, but we can answer.
Through property tax exemption. You know, because this is authorized under state statutes and then implemented at the local level. So you know, we do have to comply with what the state requirements are and the only other option that we would have at the local level is the single property urban renewal area. This property is already within an urban renewal area and it's pretty complex to create a single property urban renewal area for such a small number of units that probably wouldn't make a lot of sense. And I would like to explain that, you know, we did have some projects that that were interested in the Mootip program like this one that were delayed in the application and bringing them to council because we were modifying the program and we had to extend the program. And that program, you know, the program was renewed here just very recently. So the project has been under construction and had had this all been renewed earlier than it was, and we had made the modifications, we could have brought this forward a little bit sooner than we did. So I want to speak on the applicant's behalf in that regard, that there was, you know, a bit of a timing issue with the renewal of the program for the program as a whole, the modifications that we were making and their application and where they were in construction.
Kristin, could you? I I was, I'm not sure I followed Counselor Stapleton's look at per unit tax break for large developments.
Uh, yeah.
Tax break for this smaller, like two, two unit. And what that means, because if I heard it right, what this one would be getting a thousand dollar a month tax break on on the project. I I just didn't.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, Counselor Stapleton had asked me earlier what the the tax break would be for each of these developments over the ten year period for the project in its entirety. So I provided that information and then she took that total amount and divided it by the number of units within the development. And so then I came up with those those numbers on a per unit basis.
Do you disagree with those numbers?
No, not at all. Not at all.
Well, then, what does that mean in terms of the the total cost of the project? I mean, ten years at twelve thousand bucks tax, I mean, that's really quite a bit. We're starting to look at a lot of money actually being invested in this project through tax, tax forgiveness and a potential second ten years. What's that mean in terms of the the actual investment by the developer? Because that's a tremendous bonus for a small unit developer. Is this going to be affordable? Will it be enforced affordable? Will there be a rent control attached to it? How how will this be dealt with? Kind of equalize this thing.
Yeah, neither of these projects are meeting any affordability levels. The new criteria that council put into place was put into place after the applications were made. And however, both of these projects do meet the new criteria in the sense the new criteria had an either or component to it, either the affordability component or meeting two or more other criteria. And each of these, you know, they meet six to seven other criteria.
Well, help me out then, though, on the relationship between the tax forgiveness included in this for a small development. I and not this, just
Yeah.
Yeah, from what I heard Virginia describing, this will be standard for small developments.
So the the tax exemption piece, so in the staff report, the staff report makes a reference to what the tax exemption would be in the first year.
Well, let's talk ten.
For each of these developments. So then I did a three percent escalator per year.
Okay.
And then provided that ten year total to Counsel Counselor Stapleton. So for the larger development, the ten year exemption, if it's just the city's piece, will be around around eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
If they're successful in getting an exemption from the other taxing district, so it exempts the entire property tax over the ten year period, it will be about three point two million dollars.
On on the smaller unit?
On the large, on the large development. On this, on this one, the city portion would be approximately twenty four thousand over the ten year period. And about ninety eight thousand if all property taxes are exempted after approval from the other taxing districts.
Where's that? Okay, where's the ten thousand? Okay, I see how that works. I, okay. Are those comparable percentages from your perspective? Do those look fairly comparable in terms of the the allocation of our resources being fairly equitable between large and small?
Well, I think the I don't know that the equitable is is equitable in terms of the taxes that they pay. So there every development is going to be taxed based on their investment and what that building is at the end of the day, right? So that'll be assessed. And whether it's a two unit development, a twenty unit development, or a two hundred unit development, they will receive an exemption on their taxes owed based on their assessed valuation. So they're being, they're receiving, I, you know, it's equitable in the sense that they're receiving an exemption based on what their development is. So overall, the smaller one is going to receive less of an exemption, but it is going to be equal to the taxes that they pay based on the investment that they're making.
So as a percentage of investment, it'd be about the same as the larger project.
We don't, this this it this isn't based on the amount of investment that they're ma- that they're making. It's based on what the valuation is at the end of the day.
Okay. Great, thank you. Thank you. That makes sense. Mr. Anderson.
If the council is looking for different ways to look at this, for different options, the the code in the state law in this say you can provide an exemption for up to ten years. It would permit an exemption for less than ten years. I also want to note that the applicant, Ms. Jones, is is on the call and I think was available for questions. If council has like questions for the applicant.
Does anyone have questions for Ms. Jones?
No, but I have a question for Dan. Can I ask?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. So Dan, just to clarify, sorry, Mr. Anderson. You're saying it it could only be ten years or greater. It can't be less than ten years. Is that what you just said? No.
No, ju- just the opposite. The the typical exemption is up to ten years and that's eligible for an extension. It doesn't, the the our code would allow you to grant it for less time. So you could do five years. You could do seven years, something like that. And then it would come up for a potential extension and you would be able to make that determination.
Okay, so so somebody may be able to make an amendment, say, for five years. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't know if I how to do this. This is kind of new, Mayor Bennett. I I guess I have a question about the the last concept that just came up and the maker of this motion. So I mean, is there, would that meet like some of the goal of of moving this off tonight's agenda and having it come back at a future date in a different way? Or is, you know, doing five years instead of ten not get us partway to where the original motion that we're currently considering wants us to get to?
The best way to test that would be to offer an amendment. Look for a second and see if it passes, I think. What do you think, Dan? How would you?
Mr. Mayor, if a counselor such as Counselor Phillips wants to propose something like that, he'd do this as a substitute motion. Because it would be an approval with a condition as opposed to a denial. So it just.
Okay.
And so you don't. Yeah, I don't want to do that. I I do just, what is the, can we restate the emotion that we're considering? I just want to understand conceptually what this.
Just want to restate your motion?
Yeah, I just moved to deny the application outright. So if if my motion passes, there would be no exemption at all. They would just pay the normal taxes. They wouldn't be subject to any exemptions.
Okay.
If you wanted to do some sort of substitute, that say offered a different, like it's actually approved an exemption and offered a number of a particular number of years, you could do that.
Do you like?
I thank you for humoring me. It's just this is kind of a newer thing and I I know that there that this mootip thing is still like I'm trying to wrap my brain around it. And I I I respect you guys have been looking at this for a while.
So just if I could restate it, maybe.
Yeah.
My motion is for zero years of exemption. You could make a substitute motion for a different number. Mine is for zero. You could choose one, two, three, four, five of the ten. If you wanted, if you wanted to offer some sort of an exemption, you could pick a different number.
So what's your bid? Okay. Should we go ahead and vote?
I just Counselor Stapleton have her hand up?
Yeah, she does. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was I was waiting to hear from Trevor there, but so if I'm would like to make a substitute motion, just to be clear here.
Yeah.
I do I need to make that now? I'm so sorry. Or, okay, so I I would like to make a substitute motion that we move to approve with a five year condition on this instead of ten. Did I say that right?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'm going to second that.
Okay, Trevor is going to second your motion. Okay, what's your thoughts on this?
Um, for me, I I really want to make sure that we're investing in small developers as well as big. That really matters to me. But also, just so torn that it's only two apartments, when we have such a huge need, but but then again, right, they were only working what they had. And so I want to honor their their work that they're doing to try to address the problem that we have right now, which is housing, being creative with what they have to try and make as many units as they could. And I think that this is a good balance as far as timing, but the ten years was too much for me to take in. And so I'm hoping to find some balance with the five, if that works for others.
Have you had a chance to do a quick compute on how that fits into your anal- your previous analysis of the tax impact? Do you you'd you'd come up with your a certain amount before?
Yeah.
Probably stay the same just for five less years. That's the probably the answer, isn't it?
Right, right. The the difference is still there, but I think Kristin really talked about it's the difference in everything is equitable because they're paying taxes on a certain amount for footage, right? So.
Okay. Anyone else like to? Okay. Yes, Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I would be interested in asking the developer if she's interested in answering a question. I have a question for her.
I think she is. We can ask Angela, would you like to come on to the?
Okay, am I here? Hi.
Yeah, talking about all your, it's your money.
I know.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Jones. I appreciate it. I'm curious what the the use of these units will be. Is one of them, would you be residing in one? Is for personal use? Is it are they rentals? Are they? What what what's your, what's your intended use for these units?
Family rentals, so long term rentals, leases, signed leases downtown. I think that I wouldn't go with more than a longer than a twelve month lease because I want to make sure they're happy there because not everybody truly wants to live downtown. When they get there, they find out differently. So I would really encourage them to spend the first year with me and then we'll sign a longer lease, but I want these long term leased. And they are for families and they are residential units. And I do want to say thank you to you all for entertaining me. I am just one person. I was born and raised here in Salem, Oregon. I'm third generation. I have twin boys and they are fourth. And that's what the building's named after is Sam Max. I bought the building when I was twenty four years old and it was condemned. And so I was able to scrounge up six hundred thousand dollars from my family and Pioneer Trust Bank to bring it to vitillation. And now this project went tremendously over time and over budget. And so this tax break would make the world of difference for my financial future success. And I did do an amazing alley improvement. That alley is I've owned the building for twenty eight years and I've always wanted to improve that alley. And I did provide interior parking, so these people who live in these units will not be parking on the streets or looking for paid parking. It is, I did provide a full two car garage. So thank you.
Angela, a question on the lease. Is that built into your agreement on this mootip proposal that you are going to do at at a minimum one year leases on these places? So they don't part of it, I think, is taking a look at whether or not they're going to turn into vacation rental by that. Do you see what I mean?
Yes, and I understand why you would ask that question because I do, I that's what I do on the front, on the historical part of the building. I offer the twenty four hundred square foot New York style loft that was built in eighteen sixty seven as a vacation rental. So I do have a vacation rental and I and I love showing that off to people in from all over the world that come to visit our city to see a building that was built in eighteen sixty seven and how you know, how wonderful that is. But no, these in the back, the deal was they were never to be vacation rentals. There's not a restriction. Like I have to do a lease. It can be a month a month. It could be a six month. Or it could be, it actually a lease can be pretty much whatever you want it to be. But there was no restriction. It just needed to be a signed lease and non vacation rental.
Do we have a, is there some sort of an agreement inside on the use of these two? Inside the mootip agreement? I I'm.
Yes, I think that is a restriction. They, you can't call I qualified on seven points.
Right.
I know that you cannot even apply for if you're going to be a short term rental.
Right.
Yeah.
Kristin, I.
Yeah, that's correct. The temporary or short term rentals or tourism related uses are not allowed under the mootip program. And that's been expressed in the communication.
And the mootip won't won't extend to this larger loft apartment. That is not in any way covered by this. Is that correct?
That won't have a tax. That that part of the building won't be tax exempted.
Right, okay, that's.
Yeah, no, that that's, yeah, it I'm not making very much sense either.
Oh, no, you are. I just want to, I'm just going to double check.
So it's kind of weird. So I got two halves of the building. So the front half is historical and I pay full taxes on that.
Yeah.
Always have. And then on the back half, this new part, that's the one, if you guys vote yes. Always have. And then on the back half, this new part, that's the one, if you guys vote yes, I'd get the five-years tax break on. So, so I'll still be paying, still be paying quite a bit of taxes. She estimated for me, when I went down there, she said it was going to be between thirty-two and forty-one thousand a year. And I said, oh my God, I went so far over budget, I'm going to go broke.
Yeah.
So, anyhow, I appreciate it.
I, I feel your pain. Kristen, is this correct?
We, we don't, they're like, the exemption is only on the residential portion. We, when we've got mixed-use buildings, like if there's a ground floor retail, um, the retail pieces are not exempt.
Are not, are not exempt. It's just these two units are being discussed as exempt. And then, um, the parking, is it included in the exemption?
Uh, it should be included.
Okay.
Leads to criteria.
May want to make sure that's resolved. Chris? Jackie, I'll be right back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for staff. Uh, Ms. Rutherford, what happens if Ms. Jones decides to sell this building? Does this exemption transfer with the sale? And does the obligation to not use it for vacation uses, um, also transfer?
The exemption should go with the property and any restrictions would also go with a transaction. So, if she sold it, a, a new purchaser could not, um, convert it to a tourism use.
But they would still get the exemption. I'm sorry I interrupted you, but they, they would still get the exemption, the owner.
You know, I don't think that we've had a situation that I can think of where we have had, in the, in the time I've been here, where we have had a sale. But it should go with the property.
Does that need to be clarified?
We're proving the exemption for that location.
Does it need to be clarified? That that does, that, what, what's going on there for you, councillor?
Well, if it's sold.
Yeah, I can, my concern is that, I mean, so my concern is that, um, I understand that we're doing this for the property and not the developer per se. It's attached to the property, but our agreement to not use, use it as a vacation rental seems to me to be with the developer and not the property. So, that's why it's, there's a, a little bit of a disconnect for me and I just want to make sure it's all tied up neatly. Because I can, I can live with a five-year exemption. Um, you know, I, I can live with that. Um, I just, I just want to make sure we have this, uh, tied up. And I see Mr. Atchison has raised his hand, his virtual hand.
I'm going to go to, uh, I'm going to go to councillor Leong first and then councillor Anderson. And then we'll let Dan tie everything up.
Um, thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, Ms. Jones, for, um, coming on tonight. I had, um, just two, two quick questions on looking at your application. Um, specifically, it looks like initially, um, rental rate, you had initially written three thousand five hundred, but you had X it out or marked it out. And then, um, above it wrote two thousand per month. I was wondering, um, where you came up with, uh, the two thousand per month as, uh, the rental rate?
Well, I was, I didn't know what to put in there. I put the three thousand five hundred for both of them. I thought that would cover both of them. And then the man that helped me with my application, he said, no, you can't do it that way. Just put in one amount. And I said, I don't know what they'll rent for. And he said, just put in an amount and doesn't really matter. So, I do have some people that would like to rent, um, the, rent them. And I have one person that would like to pay sixteen fifty a month, which is less than they're paying across the alley from me. And they don't have a garage. And then the other person is, um, down a couple more blocks from me. And she said she'd pay me seventeen fifty a month and she doesn't have indoor, she doesn't have any parking either. So, those are the, I, I think I'll probably be able to rent them without even advertising them. So, but that's the rents I'm looking at.
Okay, and then my, um, second question, I probably missed it. Um, I do see it's a two-bedroom units. How many restrooms are in, um, each of them?
A full bathroom and it's a Jack and Jill, so both bedrooms open into a full bathroom with, um, a full bathtub. So, one br- one restroom, but it's a Jack and Jill, so it kind of makes it feel, I don't know, I just think that's a neat design.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, thank you, councillor. Is that okay? Move on. Councillor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I seconded councillor Hoy's motion. Uh, but I've listened with great, uh, interest to all of the, um, discussion about large developers versus small developers. Uh, and I have to tell you, um, I, I, I don't know if this is a confession or not, um, Ms. Jones, but I've now looked at heart of downtown living on my other computer screen. So, I, I've seen what you're renting there. And, um, you know, I, I think that, uh, of all things considered, that the five-year exemption is, is, uh, that's a good compromise and, and I'm going to be supporting the substitute motion.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Atchison, now, you're going to clear all this up and get a staff on the motion that does what everybody wants here?
The, the, the city's exemption of its own taxes, you know, is done with our process. So, we can, we can work that out with the assessor and then she'll go to the other taxing jurisdictions to
Okay.
Get the full exemption. Um, it, as far as, like, councillor Hoy referenced, an, an agreement not to use this as a short-term rental. There, there really isn't an agreement. It's just a requirement of the program. It's a requirement of the state law. So, it's, it's included in the resolution. It's included in our, in our code as well as the state law. And so it's a monitoring, um, uh, obligation for the city. And, uh, if they fail to, to meet the terms of the code, then we can terminate the exemption.
So, if it went to, uh, say, Ms. Jones sells it and the next person wants to go to a, uh, vacation rental, it would void the agreement by going to that kind of a rental. Is that correct?
It would, it would violate the, the terms of the resolution that you, you would adopt. And then it would go to a termination proceeding where it would come back to you to seek, seek whether to terminate it or not.
Can, under our current, uh, can, uh, Ms. Jones come back in five years and say, you know, this is ju- and we can all look at it and say, this is going great and we're able to help her keep these rents at a reasonable level by doing this or whatever, whatever the argument is in five years, can it be extended?
Well, I, I think I may owe, uh, Director Rutherford a, a coffee tomorrow for interjecting here. Uh, to give you, give you this idea, but it's going to put it a little out of cycle with the other exemptions. But yes, it, it'll be eligible for an extension and you'll have that opportunity to review it.
Okay, so it could be dealt with in the future and resolved if, if there's, you know, if, if, uh, that council feels like that's where they ought to go to continue to support, uh, Ms. Jones' project. They can do it. Okay. Okay. So, we have a five-year Mootip on this one. With, uh, the ability to extend, uh, I think, uh, a pretty much a guarantee. It is not for, it will not be for vacation rental purposes. This is for permanent, uh, housing. We even got a peek at, at, uh, Ms. Jones' really, really reasonable rents. And, uh, with parking, right? Is that the? Uh, so I think we've, we've had a chance to look at this pretty closely. So, would you like to go ahead and vote? Any, any objections to that? Okay, if you recorded, please call or roll.
Councillor Leong?
Hi.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Hi.
Councillor Hoy?
Hi.
Councillor Nordike is absent. Councillor Lewis?
Hi.
Councillor Stapleton?
Hi.
Councillor Anderson?
Hi.
Councillor Phillips?
Hi.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, okay, motion passes. Very good. Thank you, councillors Hoy and Stapleton for kind of working us through this issue. That was very helpful. Thank you. And, and Ms. Rutherford, and of course, Mr. Atchison, always, uh, ray of hope. Okay, let's move on then. To, um, just one second. I just got to get through my pages here. Information reports. Any, any questions on any of these? Councillor Stapleton?
Thank you. Um, so I just had a question on six B and I believe that's for the lighting. Sorry, I'm a little, yeah, I got a newcomer here. I'm trying to shuffle. Um, and I had asked, um, staff if it would be possible that that upgrade to that lighting system would make sure to be in line with dark skies and to make sure that we're using the most efficient forms of lighting, um, and the use of energy, um, for those parkades. Um, I'm not sure if they wanted to speak with that, that, to that or not, or just fear my concern.
Who's our, who've you been talking to?
It's a new gentleman. Um, let me grab my emails. I know somebody's on vacation, so we have somebody filling in. I can, I'm scrolling here.
So, let's call up Ms. Rutherford and see if she knows. She's.
Hey, we can, we can certainly, uh, make sure a response is provided to councillor Stapleton.
Okay, good. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
You're okay with just, they'll, they'll get back to you explaining.
Yeah, I'm sure that's, that's great, perfect. Thanks.
Great. Any others, um?
Yeah, uh, Mayor.
Niblock. Oh, okay, sorry.
Uh, I, I had a question on six C.
We're going to call, I was just going to call up Chief Niblock. Uh, he would be our, he's Mr. Fireworks here in, in Salem. Okay, go ahead, fire away. Go ahead.
Was there a question?
Trevor's going to ask you a question.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I appreciate that city staff, you know, took the time to organize this. Um, and I, I appreciate seeing the, the information that they provided us with. Um, I mean, have there, wh- when we originally, uh, looked at this earlier in the summer because the, in my opinion, because of the heat event that we had, um, you know, I was concerned about, you know, safety issues. Um, I, I guess my, one of my questions is just, uh, with the event that happened maybe right at city limits over on Vita Springs, um, do we have any sense of like, has there been any changes in our understanding of like, you know, community risk based on, you know, the unintended consequences of, you know, fireworks getting a little out of control?
I don't believe the Vita Springs incident was, was related to fireworks. Um, so that, that's, that's a little, it's a little difficult to say that, you know, that incident could be tied. That, that was my understanding. It was not fireworks related. Um, so it's a brush fire, uh, that we had to respond to. Um, back to the, uh, the concern last year, um, and, and in the report, you'll, you'll note that we, we monitor very closely a lot of factors that play into, uh, you know, the wind, the, the temperature, the fuel humidities, the Hanes index, all these things that we look at for fire spread and fire growth. Um, and so really we wanted to share with you all of the, the tools that we use every year to analyze these things. Um, before we would make a decision to issue a burn ban, um, or, or limit the use of, of, uh, fireworks in the city. We already restrict, uh, to safe and sane fireworks within the city limits. Um, the issue is really enforcement, um, of, of our existing ordinances. Uh, and mostly you've been around long enough, uh, on Fourth of July to hear the aerial fireworks that are going off and everything that goes in the air is illegal, uh, in the state of Oregon, uh, for that matter. So, um, really, uh, you know, we're, we prepare for, uh, wildland fires like we had at Vita Springs. Um, that's not an atypical fire for us. Um, you know, we've had other fires like that in the, in years past just depending on the fuel moisture levels. Um, and our recommendations for this Fourth of July, even though we had a big fire in September, that was, you know, very, uh, stressful for everybody in Salem with the, you know, the orange skies, the last September, the canyon fires. Um, and we didn't, uh, we didn't have the conditions, uh, on Fourth of July that would really pre- preclude us from continuing with the, the fireworks that we have here in town. So, we didn't do any, any motions to, to change that, that action.
Hey, thank you for those comments. And then I agree, what, my understanding as well is that Vita Springs was not a fireworks. Just more to me, kind of an example of how dry and how quickly it can get dry here. Um, I, I think that I, again, I appreciate what staff has done. I look forward to working with staff to see if there's a way to maybe state my goals a little bit better in the future and, and kind of look at this, uh, you know, moving forward. But, you know, thank you for this, you know, first pass, this good look at this data.
Thank you. Evan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, Chief Niblock, I have a question around e- education. Um, as you just said, you know, when I talk to folks in my neighborhood and on social media, I think there's a lot of confusion around what's legal and what's not legal already. And so, what does the city do on an education level to kind of educate the citizenry around? Hey, you know, the spinners are legal, but anything that goes up in the air is illegal and you should not be doing that kind of deal. Um, and, and what are we doing to try to en- enforce the current laws before talking about, you know, creating bans in the future?
So, I will tell you that, that every year we put out on social media, uh, the city's Facebook, the Salem Fire Department's Facebook, the police department Facebook page, every, every, every avenue we have to communicate, uh, Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, uh, the media, uh, reminders, uh, about what's legal and what's not legal. We include pictures. Um, if it's sold in the city of Salem, uh, at one of the stands, that is a legal firework that you can light off. Um, that you can purchase between June twenty-third and July sixth. Uh, you can light them off year-round. Uh, there's no, there's no preemption for that. Uh, anything that you go out of town, uh, that you go, uh, across state lines to buy, that's a mortar, uh, flies in the air, shoots along the ground, shoots fireballs out. Those are all illegal fireworks. So, we really try to communicate as much as we can. And now to, to your comment about enforcement, um, we, uh, Fourth of July is a very busy time, uh, for, uh, Salem Police and Salem Fire. Um, we are typically responding to calls of higher urgency. Medical calls, crimes, those types of things. And so the calls to respond to illegal fireworks, uh, typically don't, 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 we don't respond to those because there's just not enough resources to do it. Um, and so we do do the best we can, um, to educate. And, but, you know, if we see something in person, then we obviously stop and talk to people, try to educate them as well, encourage them to, to follow the law. Um, but like I said, if you've been around on Fourth of July, it's, it's pretty crazy out there. And, um, and it's, it's, it's a short period of time. The, the reason I provided the statistics for you was that um, a lot of people say immediately, well, it's a fire danger. Um, I, you know, when you look at the stats, we're not seeing a lot of fire damage. We're not seeing a lot of property damage. Um, it's more about the noise than it is about the fire hazard. Um, now, any fire chief would tell you, more people playing with matches and fire outside is, is not a good idea because it's more likely to have a fire. That, that goes without saying. Um, but I can tell you, our tenure history is very low, uh, property damage, um, you know, two hundred dollars to two thousand. Uh, so those are very small fires. Um, we're not seeing huge, huge property damage, uh, created by what's going on right now in the community. Enforcement is, uh, is obviously problematic for, uh, both the fire and the police department on those, those nights surrounding those areas just because of the sheer call volume.
Um, can I have a one more follow-up question? Thank you. Uh, my follow-up is, um, I'm kind of concerned about how many nine-one-one calls that you got, you've listed, uh, which deter, you know, our emergency first responders from picking up other calls. Would it be helpful, and you know, as a budget committee member, maybe I can talk about this in budget, would it be helpful to set up like a hotline for fireworks instead of having people call nine-one-one? If, if people are said to call, if they're going to call either way, to kind of deter them from using the nine-one-one system for fireworks? Would, would you say that's a helpful sit, you know, thing?
Yes and no. It would be the staffing of that hotline and, and, and most people, uh, thankfully do call the non-emergency number, which is answered by the same people who answer the nine-one-one calls. Um, so it does swamp that system a bit. Um, we average about three hundred additional calls on those days, right around the Fourth, Fifth, Sixth of July, uh, just because the increased call volume. And we're able to still, you know, get everything processed through. We, we try to upstaff on those days. Um, so I don't know that adding a separate call center would really be a viable solution. People are probably going to keep calling the number they're calling right now, which is a non-emergency number. A few people call nine-one-one. Um, and we deal with that to try to, try to educate them when we get through with the call, but, uh, you know, the proper number to call. But I don't know that setting up a new, a new number, again, you have to get that number out to people and have them remember to call it and that would be. a new number, again, you have to get that number out to people and have them remember to call it, and that would be a challenge as well, I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I've appreciated this conversation, I think it's exactly the conversation that needed to take place on this issue. Yeah, I, I really, and I've been trying to articulate this for every time we talk about this, the question isn't about, uh, what to ban or not ban. Everything that's dangerous is already pretty much already banned, it's, if it goes in the air, it's illegal already. The issue is that we have completely abdicated our, uh, en- enforcement of this law, I, over the course of decades. It's, it's built up, and so it's not somewhat about education, because I think people know they're illegal, they know because they have to go to Washington to buy them. They understand that's illegal, that's not the question, it's not about knowing, it's about, um, it's about uh, the, the fear, for lack of a better word, the fear of enforcement. Um, and when there isn't any, and there isn't any, there is zero, almost, there's a zero chance that we're going to enforce these laws at this time, then they just, the people just do what they want because they, it's fun, and it's not about banning more things because everything that flies is already dangerous and people already know it because they have to drive to Vancouver to buy it. Uh, this is really about, if, I mean, if we really want to change this situation, we have to, uh, actually create an implementation and enforcement plan and tell people way ahead before they drive to Vancouver and say, hey, guess what, this year, you're going to get a ticket. You're going to get a ticket, and then actually ticket some people, and then guess what, the behavior will drop off eventually. You go to just a few key neighborhoods around the city and you issue some hefty citations, guess what, the behavior will change. But until we're willing to do that, the behavior is never going to change. That's what I'm like.
Yep.
It's, it's not
Sort of like lowering, lowering, uh, speed, uh, speed signs and seeing if you can enforce it by just good behavior, it, it really takes enforcement on all of these different, uh, these kinds of enforcement activities, I think. I, I, I really have a question about whether we have the personnel to meet the kind of enforcement, I like your idea of go in and go into the, into the neighborhoods and just, uh, really lay it out on some heavy fines and see if the word spreads. It's an interesting approach.
And I, I would echo, um, Counselor Hoy's assessment there, it, it's not the, the fear of enforcement, it is the lack of resources to, to provide the, to provide the enforcement, um, you know, we have six deputy fire marshals. Um, th- they work a forty-hour week, they're not on duty at ten o'clock at night, uh, the police patrols are busy running higher priority calls um, on these days, and so, you know, and so if we're going to reprioritize, uh, if this is a re, a prior prioritization per council that, that this is an enforcement we want to take, then we would have, we would come back with, here's what the cost is going to be to actually do that, and I can tell you that historically there have been other places that have banned fireworks. And I, I would just want to make clear that the expectation is it doesn't, it doesn't happen the first year. Uh, it takes five, six years of continual enforcement and continual investment um, to make a change in the community because this is a learned behavior and, and, uh, I don't believe you can write enough tickets the first year to get the message across, um, with this, I think it would take you five years before you really saw a difference, so you my, my hope is that there wouldn't be an expectation if we made, made a decision like this that all the noise is going to go away next Fourth of July because that's not the reality.
Yeah. Tom, did you still have your hand up?
Mr. Mayor, my questions and comments have pretty much been made by the other folks, but I guess I'd say, uh, um, you know, Chief Niblock, unless we give you some more money to enforce this, it's just not going to happen because you don't have the resources and you gotta be there and that sort of stuff. Would
That's correct, and I think Chief Womack and I have talked on this and they're in the same boat, uh, if, if there's a, if there is a move or a desire on council to, to completely ban fireworks, you know, all fireworks, or enforce the ban we have now, uh, there's going to be an economic, uh, uh, equation to that.
Uh, Virginia? No? Okay, I'm not sure with that little, what's that hand? Finally spotted it, okay, uh, Trevor?
Yeah, thanks, uh, Mayor Bennett, and thank you, uh, Chief Niblock for the, uh, the update and, and the continued discussion. I absolutely agree that there's, there's no bandwidth at this time, uh, in, in terms of city resources to enforce, you know, the, the ban that already exists across the state of Oregon and in the city. I think my, my hope is that moving forward, we can get more voluntary compliance, you know, on this issue, uh, as, as well as, you know, things like lowering, you know, the, the rate of traffic throughout town, but it's really the, the voluntary compliance with the rules as they are. Um, and that's where I, I just am curious, like, I'm still hypothesizing the best way to move forward, like, if we do just ban the sale of, of fireworks in the future, does that then communicate to people that they need to comply in general, like, does that disrupt, you know, kind of the status quo enough that people start paying more attention to this? So I haven't, you know, fully fleshed those out, and I, I am, I'm looking forward to working with staff, but I, I absolutely acknowledge that, that there's no way within city resources right now to enforce, you know, the bans that are, that should already be there.
Just, just think, think back to your youth, when, was it more fun to watch a sparkler or to see a thing shot up into the air that explodes and spreads all the sparks out or fireworks that go bang? Because that seems to be a lot of what's going on, those are illegal. And that just seems to be a total fascination in all of our neighborhoods, uh, it's really interesting.
Yeah, banning, total, totally banning the sale, uh, really doesn't address the illegal fireworks, because what we're selling now is legal fireworks, so you've got about twenty stands that sell fireworks during that weak period. And, and they're nonprofits that, that benefit from that, so there's some good that comes from that, and those are legal, safe and sane fireworks. Um, and we're not seeing an issue with those, so banning that would would affect those other, those folks.
Leave the meeting.
Chris, did you?
I just had a different topic to talk about briefly, I just wanted to alert my colleagues about you're in for a real treat with first readings tonight, stay tuned, it's going to be fun. The city recorder is excited to unleash some new technology on you.
Yeah, this will be really, this will be fun, this will be fun. Do you, are you all ready to move forward to the fun? And we'll get to our first readings next then? Great, thank you, counselor, why don't we move then to, if there aren't any other questions on, uh, information reports? Okay, let's move then to first readings.
Okay, so as, uh, Counselor Hoy, uh, mentioned, we're going to try something a little different tonight, and I'm, and I'm going to ask that, uh, you raise your hand if you can hear the recording. Um, just so I know that it's coming through clearly for you folks, so we'll get started here in just one moment for the first reading.
Ordinance Bill number thirteen to twenty-one and ordinance relating to land use, amending Salem revised code fifty point seven one zero, seventy-seven point one six zero, one hundred and ten point zero three zero, point zero seven five, one hundred and eleven point zero zero one, one hundred and twelve point zero three five, point zero five zero, two hundred and five point zero three zero, point zero three five, two hundred and ten point zero one zero, point zero four five, two hundred and twenty point zero zero five, two hundred and thirty-five point zero three zero, two hundred and sixty point zero zero five, point zero one zero, point zero one five, two hundred and seventy point zero one zero, point zero one five, three hundred point one zero zero, point two zero zero, point five two zero, point six two zero, point seven two zero, point eight four zero, point eight five zero, point one 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 zero, four hundred point zero one five, point zero five five, five hundred and ten point zero zero one, point zero zero five, point zero one zero, five hundred and eleven point zero zero one, point zero zero five, point zero one zero, five hundred and twelve point zero zero one, point zero one zero, point zero one five, five hundred and thirteen point zero zero one, point zero zero five, point zero one zero, point zero one five, five hundred and fourteen point zero zero five, point zero one zero, five hundred and fifteen point zero zero five, five hundred and twenty point zero one five, five hundred and twenty-one point zero zero five, five hundred and twenty-two point zero zero five, five hundred and twenty-three point zero zero five, five hundred and twenty-four point zero zero five, point zero one zero, five hundred and twenty-five point zero zero five, five hundred and thirty point zero zero one, point zero zero five, point zero one five, point zero two zero, point zero two five, point zero three zero, point zero three five, point zero four zero, five hundred and thirty-one point zero one zero, point zero three five, five hundred and thirty-two point zero one five, point zero two zero, five hundred and thirty-three point zero one zero, five hundred and thirty-four point zero one zero, five hundred and thirty-five point zero zero five, five hundred and forty point zero zero five, five hundred and forty-two point zero zero five, five hundred and forty-three point zero zero five, five hundred and forty-four point zero zero five, five hundred and forty-five point zero zero five, five hundred and fifty point zero one zero, five hundred and fifty-one point zero zero five, five hundred and fifty-two point zero zero five, five hundred and fifty-three point zero zero five, five hundred and fifty-four point zero zero five, five hundred and fifty-five point zero zero five, five hundred and fifty-six point zero zero five, six hundred and two point zero zero five, point zero one zero, point zero two zero, six hundred and four point zero one five, six hundred and five point zero one five, six hundred and seventeen point zero two five, six hundred and twenty-six point zero one five, six hundred and thirty-one point zero one zero, point zero one five, seven hundred point zero zero five, point zero zero six, point zero eight one, point zero eight five, point zero nine five, seven hundred and two point zero zero five, point zero one five, point zero two zero, eight hundred point zero one five, point zero three five, point zero five zero, point zero six five, eight hundred and three point zero three five, point zero four zero, eight hundred and four point zero two zero, point zero two five, point zero three zero, point zero three five, eight hundred and six point zero zero five, point zero one zero, point zero one five, point zero two five, point zero three zero, point zero three five, point zero four zero, point zero four five, point zero five zero, point zero five five, point zero six zero, point zero seven five, point zero eight zero, eight hundred and seven point zero one five, point zero two zero, eight hundred and eight point zero zero five, point zero three zero, point zero three five, point zero four zero, point zero five zero, point zero six zero, point zero six five, renumbering and amending SRC two hundred and sixty point zero seven zero, point zero eight five, repealing and replacing SRC two hundred and sixty point zero two zero, point zero two five, point zero three zero, point zero three five, and chapter seven hundred and one, repealing SRC ninety-five point two four zero, two hundred and five point zero six five, two hundred and sixty point zero four zero, point zero four five, point zero five zero, point zero five five, point zero six zero, point zero six five, point zero seven five, point zero eight zero, point zero nine zero, point zero nine five, six hundred and thirty-one point zero two zero, chapter six hundred and thirty-two, chapter six hundred and thirty-three, SRC seven hundred point zero five zero, point zero nine zero, creating new provisions SRC fifty point seven one five, two hundred and five point zero five one, four hundred point zero one six, seven hundred point zero one one, point zero seven one, eight hundred point zero three one, eight hundred and eight point zero four six, and amending the Salem zoning map for certain properties located within the downtown zone multiple family high-rise residential, comerical office, and retail commercial.
Wow. Kendra, that was excellent.
Great.
Or ASL interpreter had to tap out.
Oh my God.
Did you eat that, please? That was, but it was not mine.
Wow.
Well, that was interesting.
Okay, Counselor Hoy?
Do I move with all that? I move, we conduct a public hearing on Oregon's Bill number thirteen dash twenty-one and advance to a second reading.
Second.
Second by Louis.
Thank you, and my apologies to the ASL interpreter for that, how fast that went.
That was, that was unbelievable.
Amy would have had to read that whole thing had we not used the artificial intelligence, just FYI, so that's why we did.
Jackie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I understand the need for, um, instead of having Amy read everything, to use a, to use a recording, but I felt really bad for watching Kendra just trying to catch up and, and sometimes she had to stop, and I'm not sure how it worked for the, um, Spanish-speaking interpreters. I'm assuming it was just as difficult for them as well, so, I mean, I understand the need for, for this technology, but at the same time, I'm not sure how practical it would be for uh, having interpreters be able to keep up with how fast it was going.
Okay, anyone else? Very good, uh, why don't we, uh, have the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike is absent. Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye, motion passes. Uh, we don't have any further businesses or anything else? All right, we are adjourned, thank you.
For more videos and for more information, go to capitalcommunitymedia.org and follow us on social media.